Find me in the flag salute. Hold on one second. Sorry. Well, we'll do the flag salute.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're waiting. Okay, we're going to wait a minute or two so IT can get the folks on Zoom hooked up. So bear with us. Apologies. I'd like to welcome everyone today to the Planning Commission hearing. This meeting is open to both virtual and in-person participation and may be observed online through the Placer County website. The reason we have a virtual option today is because the notice for the Mill Creek draft EIR hearing indicated that there would be an opportunity for virtual participation. Moving forward, there will not be a virtual option for future commission hearings for public comment. If you would like to make a public comment on any item today, the Planning Commission clerk will announce you when you are at a lineup and provide testimony. If you are calling in at the appropriate time, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comments for matters not on the published agenda or hearing items. Each commenter will be entitled to three minutes of comment, and you will only be given one opportunity to speak. Thank you for your consideration as we work to ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. Please be advised that today's hearing is being recorded and will be available on the Planning Commission's website following the hearing. I'd like to mention that we have a full agenda today with five hearing items. Depending on how we proceed through the hearing items, we may decide to take one or multiple short breaks. I should also note that our fifth item, the proposed housing element amendment, is scheduled for 1:30. So we will break for lunch, come back at 1:30, and that's when that scheduled hearing item is. So if you're here for just that item and you don't want to stay all the way through, you can come back at 1:30. I'll now move on to the next agenda item, which is the public comment for any matters not on the agenda. So this is just-
Quick roll call.
And we'll do a roll call. One second. Before I do public comment, we'll do roll call. Kels.
Dahlgren.
Here.
Alves.
Here.
Jewel. Beckler.
Here.
Rantin.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
So if any member of the public has an item not on today's agenda that they'd like to speak on, you'll have three minutes. You can come up to the podium, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand, and the clerk will let you know.
I'm here to talk about the preservation and safety concerns of Cicely Road. The Lincoln Highway beneath Cicely Road was named after Abraham Lincoln, and it was the first continental road linking the east coast to the west. Spanning from Times Square to San Francisco, it was dedicated in 1913 with celebrations across 13 states. Only two remaining sections of the original Lincoln Highway exist, one in Omaha, Nebraska, and the other, Penrin, California, Cicely Road. Given its historic significance, Cicely Road deserves preservation. Concerns have arisen regarding the recent survey conducted by Dewberry Engineering and National Development and Construction Corporation. Considering Cicely Road's historic importance, wouldn't the Placer County Historic Advisory Board or California's Office of Historic Preservation have been better suited to conduct such a survey? The survey results indicate that at least half of the participants supporting, support maintaining Cicely Road and preserving as much of its original structure as possible. One resident aptly expressed, "If you must repair, then please leave as much of the original concrete as possible." There are very few places where we can see the actual rocks in the old concrete and truly see this history. It may seem like progress in efficiency, but it is a loss of our ability to see and touch history and share that with our children. Eventually, we will forget this fantastic piece of history that runs right through our fabulous community. Beyond historical significance, safety remains a pressing issue. As regular walkers on Cicely Road, we often feel at risk due to excessive speeding. The road is the shortest route from Taylor Road to the Project Eight Winery, which will likely increase traffic, including wine tasting visitors. If the road is paved smoothly, speeding and impaired driving will pose an even greater risk to residents. Tragically, a child was struck while biking on Cicely Road a few years ago. The presence of a day school where the speed limit is 30 miles an hour adds further concern, as parents frequently park on both sides of the road during drop-off and pickup times. Additionally, speeding vehicles regularly hit animals. Despite the 20-mile speed limit in front of our driveway, drivers rarely adhere to it. To ensure community safety, weight limit signs should be installed at both ends of Cicely Road to divert large grape hauling trucks onto Taylor Road, the only safe alternative. Lastly, it is concerning that the proposal to pave Cicely Road coincides with the approval of the high production Project Eight Winery. Is this merely a coincidence, or does Mr. Fournier's involvement raise further questions? In closing, as the saying goes, "Once you pave over history, you can't get it back." Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Anne. Appreciate it. Hi, Laura.
Anne, I have a typed copy or whatever. I'm here. Laura Bullard, I'm a lifelong Placer County resident, okay? And sadly, I have watched the destruction of my beautiful county with the unfettered development, which has been allowed over the last decade, okay? That development, which has gone against the planned development, which was designed as part of our community plans, has brought excessive traffic and urban sprawl, which was not part of those plans. I asked myself, who could prevent this degradation of the beautiful county that I grew up in, that I raised my children in, and that I hope that someday that they're going to move back to? The answer is that you, as the planning commissioners, are the first line of defense in keeping the abomination from occurring. Each of you, as a planning commissioner, has the obligation, the people that you represent, the citizens of the county, not the developers, to comb each and every proposal presented before you with a fine-tooth comb, and make sure that those proposals adhere to the community plans from that area. And you cannot use the excuse that somehow the community plans are outdated. Those community plans are the same age as the general plan, and although they have been amended, still stand as the law of the land. I heard and discussed in December that at least one of you on the ranch proposal said, "I wish I had a more updated community plan for the Dry Creek area." Well, that planned date coincides with the general plan, and even though the county is looking to alter the general plan, it is still the law of the land, and the community plans go along with them are also the law of the land. In recent meetings dealing with the update of the general plan, I have been told by the planning that there is not necessary any plan to update the community plans, which some of which apparently date back to the 1960s. But that does not mean that those plans are irrelevant or unnecessary. Those plans reflect the wishes of those communities and allow for the uniqueness of each of those communities and the special understanding that the people of that area have about the traffic patterns, the flood issues, et cetera. So it is critical that each of you, as you look at the new proposals, that you study them in depth to see that they fit the community plans. And if a commissioner from a community says that it does not fit the community plan for that area, you should all vote with that commissioner. In December, I saw two of you have the guts to stand up and say no to the ranch proposal, as it was an extreme violation of the Dry Creek community plan. The rest of you should have done that also. Please stop the unfettered destruction of our county and pay closer attention to future proposals. Don't use the excuse that because others have gotten away with it, that somehow these should also. This is about the future of our county. Please don't destroy it completely. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Bullard. Can you state your name?
My name is Riversstein.
You have to do it at the microphone.
My name is Riversstein. Good morning. Placer County Planning Commission. I would like to take this opportunity to talk about the Western Spadefoot, as they will be impacted by the Sunset area plant. They are neither true frogs nor toads. They're highly specialized amphibians in the genus Speia, and they only live in California. They're equipped with hardened spurs on their hind legs, the spades they're named for, which they use as shovels to burrow into muddy soil at the end of the wet season, where they go mostly dormant and become difficult to detect during the dry season. I brought some photos along to show their cuteness. That has a map with their general distribution in the Lincoln area, as well as their beautiful, beautiful camouflage that makes them extremely hard to see in the road. So thanks to these adaptations, they're perfectly suited to fill this niche of unique habitat around Lincoln, which currently consists of agricultural land that affords the spade foots alternating flood and dry seasons that they depend on. In the rainy season, these fields fill with temporary vernal pools, and most of these vernal pool habitats in Placer County have already been eliminated by development and segmented by roadways. Some formerly known spade foot populations have already been eradicated entirely. These spade foots are a California species of special concern, and these individuals may actually be the last stable population in Placer County, all within a range of just a few miles. And I'm asking for your help to make sure that they remain here. Despite these adaptations and incredible hardness, they cannot survive extensive habitat modification. Amphibians are considered indicator species, meaning that since they're extremely sensitive to changing conditions and pollution, they're usually some of the first animals to die off, an indicator of what's to come. The development happening west of Lincoln will cause significant damage not only to this population of spade foots, but also two species of federally endangered vernal pool shrimp, as we create a direct connecting route between two highways and introduce more traffic and especially trucking. Despite this relative isolation of the area and the nocturnal habits they stick to, they've already fall significantly victimized to, they already fall victim to significant road mortality within the area of development. Due to the sensitive nature of this vernal pool habitat and its location within the already protected Auburn Ravine watershed, I believe the clearest course of action is to keep as much of this unique ecosystem intact as possible. Thankfully, we have several great examples of mitigation measures, which have proven to be effective elsewhere in California, such as elevated roadways for endangered Yosemite toads, thoughtful drainage infrastructure, and amphibian underpasses, which are named as best practices by the United States Geological Survey. By developing responsibly and proactively, we have an opportunity to coexist with wildlife that can't be found anywhere other than California, before they can't be found anywhere at all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Kels, do we have anybody online?
We do, Chair. Caller with the phone number ending in 7141, please unmute your mic and give your comments. Caller with the phone number ending in 7141, are you able to mute your mic?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You were talking over the prompt to tell me how to unmute, so I couldn't hear it. This is Diane Louise Zalesi from Christian Valley Park, and I'm calling you via my phone, which is extremely inconvenient for partially that reason, because the Zen link is not functional. It says it's an expired ID. So I don't know if you have an IT there, but I would say at least for the 1:30 item, that should be rectified, that that link be re, and back in working order, or there's a problem here all around, because it was published as having that access, not just phone access. And I am under ADA accommodations, therefore, it definitely fills that matrix.
Diane, it's working now.
That wasn't my plan to comment. That was just what everybody needs to know going forward. So in terms of this meeting, I just would like to elaborate on the fact that this planner, Board of Commissioners, needs to be looking outside the California mandate and dictatorial mandates of these Rena numbers. And I would like to see this commission with the Board of Supervisors put legal on this to force the state of California to prove these numbers, because the exodus is huge, the housing bubble is about to crash. All of the indicators are there that we're chasing down and inconveniencing and rezoning areas that are not necessary. We need to challenge the state in a conditional acceptance and make them prove their claim that the numbers are valid. So on that note, I'm going to hope that Zoom is resumed, reinstated, because it is a vital tool. It's the only actual thing that came out of COVID that was worth having. So I would hope that you would go forward and want to have the transparency our sister county in Eldorado does. I commend those Board of Supervisors for going forward in the hybrid. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Diane.
Diane, just a quick note. Our Zoom is working. I do have people on there. Please try logging on again. It may prompt you to use the webinar ID that is also posted on the agenda.
Thanks, Kels. I've got one more. Okay.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hello. My name is Catherine Barus Slater. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was formerly an attorney for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, where I helped develop numerous wildlife restoration plans, and currently I volunteer for the Sierra Club Placer Group. I'm here to discuss threats facing Western Spadefoot population in Placer County from Village 7 and Village 5A development projects in Lincoln, as well as additional development that is happening in the unincorporated portions of Placer County to the west of Lincoln. This is an important population, and it is possibly one of the last populations of Western Spadefoot in the county. And I'm going to ask you to ensure that developers for the projects that are going to be widening more road take appropriate measures to protect this vulnerable population. I learned about the threat to Lincoln's spadefoot population, and it's also in Placer County there, to the west of Lincoln, when Mr. Steen contacted the Sierra Club Placer Group and told us he was observing large numbers of spadefoots being killed by cars and trucks due to an increase in road traffic along Moore Road from development in Lincoln, the Village 7 project specifically. This traffic increase is a big problem because Moore Road separates vernal pool habitat and upland areas that together are home to this spadefoot population. The roadkill will certainly get worse as this area is built out and Moore Road is widened pursuant to the Village 5A specific plan and other plans unless protective measures are taken. Fortunately, the Village 5A plan does have a requirement to preserve and promote natural resources. The Village 7 plan requires mitigation for the loss of special status species. However, it doesn't appear that spadefoot surveys to date were conducted by the project planners. Protecting this population is very important since, as I said, they may be the last remaining population in Placer County. The Western Spadefoot has been designated as a Priority One species of special concern by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to help focus the attention of state and local officials on the conservation risks facing spadefoots and to enable planners to take measures to prevent further species decline before a formal listing is needed under California's Endangered Species Act. On the federal side, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has already proposed listing Western spadefoots as a threatened species under the Federal Endangered Species Act. Based on my experience at Fish and Wildlife, I know the importance of protecting special status species, and I also recognize how difficult it is to plan and implement projects benefiting elusive species like the Western spadefoot.
Thank you, Kathy. Your time is up. I appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have one more caller.
Caller, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, good morning. I just wanted to let you know that the webinar Zoom link is showing it's expired. That's why people can't get in. And I heard on YouTube the option to put in the ID number, and if you do that, it does work.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
All right, Amanda Ross.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Oh, thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Do we have anybody else?
Nope.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment for items not on the agenda.
We're going to take a quick pause.
And we're going to take a quick pause so we can check our technology potential issues. So we'll take a five-minute break. Is that good, Kelsey?
Yeah.
Five minutes. Thank you.
You are good. I'm going to do a quick one for you. Yep. All right, perfect. Yeah. Oh, Jesus. Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay. All right.
We're going to re-adjourn, reconvene. Kelsey, you have a comment?
Hold on.
Sure.
Okay, I think we're good. Yep, we're good.
Okay. Did you want to say anything about how?
Yes. I just want to make a quick note that we have verified that everything is working. You will just need to utilize that webinar ID. There seems to be some sort of hyperlink embedded that is causing the issue, so if you put in the Zoom, it will then plug in the ID.
Thank you, Kelsey. Before we get to Director's Report, Commissioner Beckler had a question on the comments not on the agenda.
Chris, maybe it's a quick question that could just be followed up. For the pre-construction surveys that were mentioned for, I think it was Village 7, Village 5, I don't know if those are the city of Lincoln?
They are the city of Lincoln.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to the report from the county's planning director. Thank you, Mr. Puhuli.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Dahlgren, Planning Commissioners, Chris Puhuli, Placer County Planning Director. You should have a report that will be passed out to you, as well as the quarterly project reports that we've been talking about, that I've been mentioning for some time now. So those will start making their way around to you. Wanted to start with past and upcoming Board of, or I guess upcoming Board of Supervisors items. Next week, on 4/1, the meeting will be held in Tahoe. There is an item, the, a planning item, the contract with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency to perform the TBAP Amendment Package that we've mentioned here in the past. So that, again, the contract is on for next week. On 4/15, we have three planning items that are going to be considered by the Board. Those items have previously been considered by the Planning Commission. It's the Mahoney Rezone Project, the Bigford Ranch DA Amendment, and then the Green Means Go Project Closeout for the Auburn Bowman Community Plan. Upcoming Planning Commission meetings, on 4/10, we have four tentative items for you, including a subdivision map modification for the Winchester subdivision, the Placer Ranch Phases 1A and 1B, 1C map modifications, and then the Ivy, which is a project in Granite Bay. It is a senior and assisted care facility. I did mention at your last meeting that we would likely have our 4/24 meeting in Tahoe. That meeting will actually be held here in Auburn, so wanted to note that for you. We do have a couple of tentative items that we're working on for that meeting. And then I also wanted to mention that at this time, we are thinking that the 5/8 meeting will be canceled due to a lack of items for 5/8. So wanted to also note that for you. A final decision on that will be made as we get closer, and we know that we don't have any items. Also, on the Planning Director Report, I have upcoming visioning workshops for the general plan update. Our next one is next week in the city of Lincoln at the Lincoln Library, their Willow Room, April 2nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Following that meeting, on April 5th, we have an online workshop at 10:00 a.m., on, again, April 5th. And then the last visioning workshop that will be held is April 30th, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the North Tahoe Event Center. And so the last item that I wanted to mention, request from the Planning Commission late last year was a request to get a list of projects that would be upcoming to the Planning Commission and Board. And so the report that I provided to you this morning will be provided on a quarterly basis. It is a listing of all of the projects that will ultimately be heard by either the Planning Commission or Board of Supervisors. So we'll, in the case of the Board items, they will first make their way to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. What you'll see here is projects broken out by district and broken out by hearing body, Board of Supervisors, and Planning Commission. There are 56 current projects on the list, so we have a number of active projects that are working their way through the process. And so, you know, I encourage you to take a look at it. If you have questions, please, please see me. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Puhuli. Do any commissioners have any questions for Chris on his report? Seeing none, we're going to move on to our next hearing. Thanks, Chris. We're now moving on to Item 1 on the agenda, the Placer Commerce Center Master Conditional Use Permit and phased vesting tentative subdivision map modifications. That's a sentence. And extension of time. The Planning Commission is the final decision body for this item, so it won't be going to the Board of Supervisors. It will be presented by Jared Peters, Associate Planner. Hi, Jared.
Good morning, Chair Dahlgren, Commissioners. Jared Peters with the Placer County Planning Services Division, here to present the Placer Commerce Center Master Conditional Use Permit and Phase Tentative Subdivision Map Modification and Extension of Time. So briefly to introduce staffs, the actions that we are requesting, staffs requesting the Planning Commission take the following actions. Adopt the second Placer Commerce Center Addendum to the previously certified Sunset Area Plan Plaza Ranch Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report. Approve a modification to the Master Conditional Use Permit for the Placer Commerce Center project to add one additional driveway onto Athens Avenue, four additional driveways onto Foothills Boulevard North, modify the approved road and frontage improvements, update the Placer Commerce Center Master Plan and Design Guidelines, and adjust project phasing and conditions to accommodate these changes subject to the modified conditions of approval. Approve a modification to the phased vesting tentative subdivision map of the Placer Commerce Center project to add one additional driveway onto Athens Avenue, four additional driveways onto Foothills Boulevard North, modify the approved road and frontage improvements, update the Placer Commerce Center Master Plan and Design Guidelines, and adjust the project phasing and conditions to accommodate, again, subject to the modified conditions of approval. And finally, to approve a 24-month extension of time for the phased vesting tentative subdivision map and master conditional use permit for the Placer Commerce Center project, extending the project's entitlement expiration date to December 13th, 2027, subject to the modified conditions on the staff report. So the site is located south of Athens Avenue, east and west of the Athens and Foothills Boulevard North intersections, west of the Thunder Valley Casino, and east of the landfill. Oh, too far. There we go. The site is zoned Innovation Center Special Purpose and Entertainment Mixed Use Special Purpose in the Sunset Area Plan. So a bit of background on the project. The original entitlement approved by the Commission and subsequently the Board of Supervisors in 2022 included the following, a master conditional use permit and phased vesting tentative subdivision map for up to just shy of six and a half million square feet of flexible industrial space. Adopted the Placer Commerce Center Master Plan and Design Guidelines and amended the area plan to modify the ultimate road sections of Athens Avenue. In 2023, a large slot map was approved and subsequently modified to adjust timings or annexation into the CFD/CSA zone to benefit. So the proposal before you today is as follows. It includes a new encroachment onto Athens Avenue labeled as Athens Dr. 1 upon the board and on the map in the staff reports, four new ride-in, ride-out restricted encroachments onto Foothills Boulevard North. Those are 1A and B and 2A and B to modify the approved road and frontage improvements, modifying figures 4-1, 4-2, and 4-5 in the Placer Commerce Center Master Plan and Design Guidelines, adjusting the phasing plan to accommodate these changes, a 24-month extension of time, and a 24-month extension of time for the master conditional use permit and vesting phased tentative subdivision map, which is set to expire December 13th of this year. All of this is subject to the modified conditions of approval, attachment H, which includes, but isn't limited to, the following required off-site improvements and their associated timings, the phasing of the project, funding mechanisms for stormwater retention, responsibility of maintaining improvements, abandonment of relinquishment of abudders rights, allowance for night work for road improvements, timing for the CFD/CSA annexation to update the expiration date, and general cleanup. So, onto our first road and frontage improvements. This here is figure 4A, 4-1, I'm sorry. On the left is the current figure that is in the Master Plan and Design Guidelines. On the right, the proposed one. You'll notice that 4-1 has been updated to include the new encroachments onto Athens and Foothills. Those are those pink diamonds there. Here for 4-2, this figure has been split into two figures, 4-2A and 4-2B. So 4-2A shows Placer Commerce Center obligations west of Foothills Boulevard North and includes a dual, the dual turn lane approved with the original project. It includes the reduced path and parkway. 4-2B shows the ultimate improvements for Athens east of Foothills, including the reduced parkway and path on the Placer Commerce Center frontage. 4-5 has been updated to show the reduced pathway and park. As shown on the draft road lines attached to the staff reports, the parkway would vary in size along the frontage and would reduce to zero to allow turn lanes to attach to the shared use path. Where the path and turn lanes attach, the path would reduce to six feet, but then would return to 10 feet where there is no turn lane. So as Buzz Oats has worked to implement the project with the, with the site layout has changed, and as such, the proposed phasing of the project has changed with it. With, while a fifth phase is being added to the project, no additional square footage is being proposed at this time, and the timing for improvements has been updated to account for the modified phasing. In addition, with the conditional, with the master conditional use permit, adjustment to the phasing plan may be made to accommodate shifts in market demand over time. As such, the phases outlined in the conceptual phasing plan may be modified at the discretion of the Planning Director following review by Placer County staff per the Department Expediting Provisions in Section 6.6 of the Placer Commerce Center Master Plan. The aforementioned changes do not require an administrative modification or a modification to the master plan. However, since this revision involved... However, since this revision involves modified improvements and requires, with those modified improvements, require Planning Commission review, it has been included for consideration, both for the Planning Commission. Here I just have a brief discussion of the permit expediting features, as I discussed earlier. So for the extension of time, the project is set to expire in December of this year, two thousand and twenty-five. As such, the applicant has applied for a twenty-four-month extension of time to provide sufficient time for the project to vest entitlements. The project owner, PW Fund B Development LLC and its agent Buzz Oats Construction, are currently moving forward with the construction of the Sunset Area Plan East Gravity Trunk Sewer. Furthermore, the project has submitted two separate sets of improvement plans for required improvements along Foothills Boulevard North and Athens Avenue. However, those plan, the plan review is contingent upon the modifications here in this master use permit modification today. Once this issue is settled, the design process for Buildings One, Three, and Four will proceed. So, secret compliance, as the environmental impact report, a environmental impact report was prepared for the Sunset Area Plan Plaza Ranch Specific Plan and certified on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen. During the original entitlement, the project prepared an addendum to the EIR to address potential impacts resulting from the project. During entitlement review of this modification to the approved project, staff determined that the additional, that an additional addendum to the EIR was required to fully capture and analyze the modified road improvements to the project. Two transportation impact studies were performed for the project, one addressing the new Athens encroachments and one addressing the Foothills encroachments. Both found the modification to the project would not increase the potential impact to the project to the point where further review and mitigation were required. One mitigation measure has been added to the project to perform pre-construction surveys, or the Croches Bumblebee, which was not captured in the original entitlement, but was added to the Sunset Area Plan EIR MMRP last year. So that brings us to our recommendation. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission take the following actions: Adopt the second Placer Commerce Center addendum to the Certified Sunset Area Plan, Placer Ranch Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report; Approve the modification to the master conditional use permit for the Placer Commerce Center project to add one additional driveway onto Athens Avenue and four additional driveways onto Foothills Boulevard North to modify the approved road and frontage improvements; Update the Placer Commerce Center master plan and design guidelines; and to adjust project phasing and conditions to accommodate these changes subject to the modified conditions of approval and supported by the findings in the staff report. Furthermore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve a modification to the phased vesting tentative subdivision map. Too far. Approve a modification to the phased vesting tentative subdivision map for the Placer Commerce Center project to add one additional driveway onto Athens Avenue, four additional driveways onto Foothills Boulevard North to modify the approved road and frontage improvements; update the Placer Commerce Center master plan and design guidelines; and adjust project phasing and conditioning to accommodate these changes subject to the modified conditions of approval and supported by the findings in the staff report. Finally, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve a twenty-four-month extension of time for the phased vesting tentative subdivision map and master conditional use permit for the Placer Commerce Center project, extending the project's entitlements expiration dates to December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-seven, again, subject to the modified conditions of approval and supported by the findings in the staff report. Staff received no public comment on this project, and the applicant is here to respond to any questions they are more appropriate to. In that, I am available for any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners if they have any questions. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah. Chris, this is a very complex. I'm sorry about that. It's a very complex project. And so at least I understand that there's a large lot and small lot.
Correct.
Plan included in this. Apparently, the large lot plan has already been recorded.
Correct.
So that's beyond us, but that's fine. But any rate, what I would like is, in the use permit, on item two oh two, it talks about the extension. And this is on page one eighty-seven in the document, but could you explain that to me?
Is that one of our findings? Could you repeat that for me?
But it, it talks about the initial extension in thirty-six months, forty-eight months, and ten years. And so maybe you could explain.
The final, is that the final condition of approval?
Yeah, we're going to approve an extension, but I would like you to explain condition two oh two.
Condition two oh two, give me one moment to bring that up. There we go.
It's on page one eighty-seven.
Thank you. All right. So, condition two oh two outlines the vesting rights for the project. There are essentially two separate phases for the project to vest. First and foremost, to vest the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit would be vested when the project records its first small lot final map. And that has not happened yet, and that is the reason that the extension of time is being requested. But furthermore, once the project, because it will be, it is vested, or it has recorded a final map, but not a small lot map, or, I'm sorry, a large lot map, not a small lot map. The small lots would be vested, the areas in the small lots would be vested individually. So if Phase One was vested as one large small lot map, that would be, that area would be vested, but the result, the rest of the area in the tentative map would remain unvested. And so every time that the applicant or a property owner records a small lot map, that extends the validity, the duration of the tentative map for an additional, I believe it is, two years, yeah, forty-eight months. That can be extended up to a period of ten years. That max is not set by us, it's set by state law. But yeah, there is basically vesting the conditional use permit and then vesting the maps themselves. And the maps are all done individually based on the small lot maps.
So the ten years will be dealing with just each phase?
Each, it, it could be a phase, it could be a map. The conditional use permit currently hasn't not been approved for ten years, but the map could go up to ten years.
Individually, is what you're talking about?
The tentative map specifically, yes. If they, if, so currently, if you, if your board approves this extension of time, that would move the conditional use permit and tentative map, not ten years, I'm sorry, an initial twenty-four months ahead to, I believe it was twenty, twenty-two, seven, December. If the applicant wanted to, by, by, that date had not extended the conditional use permit or vested it, they would have to submit for another extension of time. If they do submit a, if they do record a small lot map, then that would vest their conditional use permit, so they would no longer have to extend that. And it would vest the area within that small lot map. And it would extend the rest of the tentative map two years. So they would have two more years to essentially record another small lot map, or their, their tentative map would expire. They would have to come back in to get a new tentative map.
Jared, you lost me. You're going to have to dumb it down. I mean, or give me a flow chart. That was way too, I don't get it. Can you, can you summarize it, please?
Basically, there are two, there's just the two separate sections. If they want to record the CUP, that's just done with the small lot map. Once the small lot map's recorded, CUP is done and vested. When they went, when they want to, if they want to vest the tentative map, the tentative map would, is, or the tentative map gets vested every time that they record a small lot map.
Every time?
Every time. So you don't vest the entire area, you just vest the area in that small lot map. So if you do, if it's an eighth of the project site, that eighth is vested. And the rest of it, they have two years to record a small lot map.
Okay.
And if they do that again, they get another two years, up to ten years.
Okay.
And that's for, for each phase, right?
The phases particularly reference the improvements. The applicant doesn't necessarily have to vest an entire phase at once. They could vest half of Phase One if they only have plans for Phase One, knowing full well that that gives them two years, and that's, they only have, you know, the rest to vest the rest of the project. They don't have to vest an entire phase at once, but if they wanted to, they could. If their small lot map included the entirety of Phase One, Two, et cetera. But there's no requirement for them to vest the entirety of a phase.
Okay, so the phases are, well, it's still a bit complicated. I think I'm beginning to understand, but maybe we can find out more as we progress through the hearing. So, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beckler?
Can I just try to maybe ask a follow-up question? Because I, so is it the, the, all the phases, Phases One, Two, Three, and Four, and potentially a new Five? That's part of the tentative map that has not been vested until there's a small lot map? What I think you're saying is that the extension of time for the unvested large lot tentative map, which includes all phases, would be part of that ten-year cycle for extensions? Because I think that was your question. Is it on the phase or on the full overall map?
Yeah, well, my question is, when we're, when we're looking at granting an extension, what are we granting?
Right.
Basically.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if I, I sort of understand it, but not clearly, but I think we'll get to the answer before.
Okay, it's a good question.
I still want a flow chart.
And if I could just add a little bit of clarification to this. This process is set forth in statute, and the reason it's set forth in statute, it makes it a little different from other extensions of time that you see. And the reason for that is, by statute, it's, the language of that says basically, if you have a project that has to construct a large amount of public improvements in relation to it, and I think the amount is over two hundred and thirty-six thousand in public improvements. In that instance, there is this kind of tiered extension of time that if they, if they have constructed that amount and met that threshold, and they've only done one phase, the approval of, the approval of that phase gives them a forty-eight-month extension of time to do another phase. So basically, in light of the fact that there is a significant lift for public infrastructure and the fact that, that that timing may result then in the delay of phases, you're allowed to, once you do one phase, then you get a forty-eight-month extension to do another phase, as long as it's in the same project, because you've got that huge public infrastructure payment upfront, and with a max of ten years. So that process is separate from the normal extension of time process that we see in terms of two years. So they get, they somewhat work together, but that, hopefully that helps to explain why it's worded a little differently from what you normally see.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner?
Just a short question. I just want to make sure I understand correctly. The only improvements to Athens are within the onsite section. There's nothing offsite connecting to Fitment or to, or to the other street on the right, on the east?
Improvements do extend past the borders of the project. I don't believe it goes far as Fitment. Phil, can you add on to that?
So the improvements beyond the frontages of the project going west towards Fitment would just be lane transitions to get back to existing. So there'll be a widening, and then we'll need to take that pavement back to existing, so there'll be some pavement tapers.
And nothing to the east, to industrial?
So to the east, the requirement would be for the project to construct the full four lanes to connect up to the improvements that are already existing in front of the casino. So that will be a complete road section.
And bike lane facility included?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Peters?
Yeah, good morning. Not necessarily the question, but I just, as one of the newest members on the commission, the applicant for Sunset Area Plan did reach out to me. I spoke to them, just to get a better understanding, to try to get my head above water on this. And I really appreciate them reaching out and discussing their project with me, and it helps me get a better understanding. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with questions? Or is the applicant here? Can we have him come up? Good morning. Can you state your name?
Hi, my name is Sheridan Evans.
Wait, hold on a second, your mic's not on. There you go.
My name is Sheridan Evans. I'm Development Manager of Buzz Oats Construction. I'm the applicant representing PW Fund B as well.
Have you reviewed and agreed to the terms and conditions as presented here today?
Yes.
Awesome. Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Do you have any comments that you'd like to make, other than what Mr. Peters has presented?
No, just to add, to give you real examples of the amount of infrastructure that's going out there. It was alluded to in the presentation, but we are currently constructing the Sunset Area Plan East Gravity Sewer Trunk. It's about forty feet deep, ranges from forty to twenty-five feet deep. We're going up foothills right now. That's happening now. And then, as Phil France had spoken to about the roadway extensions and expansions of roadways, that's also going to occur this year as well, where we have plant sets submitted and are currently under review. So there's a lot of infrastructure that's happening. And related to the, the map extension, you know, these things take time, and so your, your conditional use permit would expire while you're working on the, on the infrastructure. So that's why the, the, the extension is included here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, maybe.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson?
Maybe just one more follow-up question. The ten years, what, what does that mean to your organization? That when you have the whole project done, or?
No, the, the ten years is set by the Subdivision Map Act of California. That's not something that we set or that the county of Placer sets.
So, yeah, there's a ten-year time limit. And so what does that mean, I guess, in terms of your operation?
Will you be done in ten years, is what he's asking?
No, the, the original master plan was envisioned for over twenty years. Typically, how development works in California, for a large-scale development such as this, you would do a development agreement that would allow you to go beyond the ten years based on the terms of that agreement. But in this case, we just did a master plan, which is why we're still subject to the Subdivision Map Act. The, the limit of ten years, rather. So for us, what that means is, as we develop going on, we would either submit an additional application for an additional conditional use permit, a conditional use permit later down the line, if these entitlements expire until or before we've completed buildout of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm now going to open up to public comment for this particular item on the agenda. If anybody from the public would like to stand up and discuss three minutes on this topic. Seeing none in the room, Kelsey, do we have any online?
None online.
None online, okay. So I'm going to close public comment for this item. And if the commissioners have any other further questions? If not, I'm going to go to deliberations on this item? No questions? Okay, deliberation, Commissioner Beckler?
Yeah, I just wanted to also disclose, I did meet with the applicant team to get a better understanding of the reason for the road improvements. I know the Sunset Area Plan had been approved some time ago, and it made sense that, you know, having multiple driveways to support different businesses that could be coming into that Innovation Center seems to be within the, you know, the, the spirit and the vision of that area. So it was helpful to get that background and context. So I didn't have any other questions or comments.
Any other commissioners? Okay, then, should we take these individually, Clayton?
Yes, let's take each of these individually, and they've already been read into the record, so you can just refer to item one or item two.
So whoever wants to make the motion, George will do it, his district.
Make a motion to approve item one as read into the record by planning staff?
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
First and a second, roll call vote, please, Kelsey?
Alves?
Yes.
Runtine?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Dalgrin?
Yes.
Motion to approve item two as read into the record by planning staff?
Second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Alves?
Yes.
Runtine?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Dalgrin?
Yes.
Motion to approve item three as read into the record by planning staff?
Second.
Alves?
Yes.
Runtine?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Dalgrin?
Yes.
Motion to approve item four as read into the record by planning staff?
Second.
Alves?
Yes.
Runtine?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Dalgrin?
Yes. Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Meyer Rahoken, I think I pronounced that okay, Residence Remodel Project Subdivision Modification. The Planning Commission is the final decision body for this item, and it will be presented by Shannon Hill, Senior Planner. Welcome, Shannon.
Thank you, Chair Dalgrin, and good morning, commissioners. And just so you know, the pronunciation is Mairey Raconan.
I was so off. Apologies to the applicant.
Thank you. Sorry. There we go. The proposed project is located at 1112 Snowcrest Road in Alpine Meadows Community Plan Area, approximately 1.5 miles west of Highway 89 between Tahoe City and Truckee. The approximately 0.23-acre parcel is recorded as Lot 314 in Alpine Meadows Estates, Subdivision Unit 9. Images on this slide show the existing residence looking north from the driveway and the lot in relation to the surrounding neighborhood and Bear Creek to the west, the image on the right. The site, the site slopes downward at a grade of approximately 23% from the edge of Snowcrest Road, and as shown on this slide, the existing residence is accessed via a staircase leading down from the parking pad off Snowcrest Road. Here's the vicinity, vicinity map for the property in relation to the Truckee River and Highway 89, also known as River Road to the east. The neighborhood is accessed via Alpine Meadows Road from Highway 89. Proposed project would construct in addition to the existing residence, including a new two-car garage, an enclosed entry and stairway at street level, and subgrade living space, storage, and laundry room below the garage, which would add 1,302 square feet to the existing 1,334, 334 square foot residence. This slide provides a breakdown of the square footage of the proposed addition and visual simulations of the proposed project. The existing home is downslope from the proposed two level, two-level addition with the garage entrance at street level, and the additional conditioned space and unconditioned storage area below the garage. There is a mapped 20-foot front setback from the property line, and this mapped, mapped setback, which is coincident with the public utility easement, is proposed to be partially abandoned to accommodate the proposed addition, which is why the proposed project requires approval of a subdivision modification. The various easements associated with the property are shown on the next slide. So as you can see here, there's a 30-foot drainage easement through the western boundary of the parcel, in addition to a 10-foot multipurpose easement and 20-foot public utility easement from the property line. The roof of the proposed addition would encroach approximately 15 feet into the easement and setback, with the walls of the structure encroaching approximately nine feet, 10.5 inches into the public utility easement. With construction of the project, the walls of the addition would be approximately five feet from the front property line, with the roof approximately 2.5 feet from the property line. The proposed partial abandonment of the mapped public utility easement and setback, or just the public utility easement, sorry about that, requires Board of Supervisors approval, and recommended condition of approval number 11 for the proposed project requires this approval prior to issuance of the building permits. Neither the drainage easement or multipurpose easement shown here are proposed to be abandoned, just that front setback and public utility easement. Okay. This and the next few slides show the elevations for the proposed addition in relation to the existing residence. The height of the addition, measured in compliance with 17.54.02B of the zoning ordinance, is approximately 27 feet, and staff have confirmed that the proposed height of the addition is less than the maximum height limitation of 35 feet of the residential single-family district of the Placer County zoning, zoning ordinance. In addition, the applicant has obtained approval of the proposed design from the Bear Creek Planning Committee in Alpine Meadows. This is the east-facing elevation. The north elevation shown here depicts the height and massing of the addition in relation to the existing residence. This is the rear of the And the south elevation shown here depicts the proposed garage addition in relation to the street grade and the subgrade addition. Moving on to staff analysis, the image on the left of the slide shows the architect's reasoning for the proposed garage location on the west side of the property versus the east side. As shown by the red border, if the garage was constructed on the east side, it would require a variance to the 10-foot side setback, in addition to modification of the mapped front setback, whereas the proposed location will not require a variance to the side setback, just the front mapped setback. The image on the right shows other properties in the immediate vicinity, vicinity of the subject property, with residences and/or accessory structures encroaching into the mapped 20-foot front setback. You could see where various properties are circled, noting where properties that encroach into that mapped setback, with previous approvals from the county. In addition, the proposed project with the recommended conditions of approval is compatible with the single-family residential neighborhood, in that there are many examples of other properties in the immediate vicinity with improvements constructed in the mapped front setback. Oh, sorry, I forgot to change this slide. As shown on the previous slide, the proposed project site is physically suitable for the type and proposed density of the development, as it is consistent with the residential single-family combining planned residential development maximum three units per acre zoning district, and complies with allowable site coverage. Note that the allowable site coverage is 30%, and the total coverage associated with the existing residence and proposed addition is approximately 27%. And the subdivision map modification would not authorize a use that is not otherwise allowed in the land use district, in that single-family residences with typical residential improvements, such as garages, decks, and entryways, are permitted in the residential single-family district. Also, I'd like to note, prior to moving on to the staff recommendation, note that the applicant has requested, and staff is in agreement with the following changes to conditions number three and number nine. The condition number three is revised to read, "Prior to building permit issuance, any proposed changes to the plan submitted for the proposed subdivision modification shall be approved by the Bear Creek Planning Committee." And condition number nine is revised to read, "There, there shall be no land or soil disturbance or other improvements in the drainage easement. The roof, drip line trench, and any portions of the proposed structure's foundation, as well as any driveway retaining walls and infiltration trenches, must be located outside of the easement." The reasoning for changing conditioning number, condition number three is that the condition was met after the, these were submitted for review, and the Bear Creek Planning Committee has already approved the change that was previously requested. And for number nine, it's a minor, minor clarification, to clarify that no land or soil disturbance is approved during construction, and not that, like, no ladders or other scaffolding to be able to construct the project could be there temporarily.
Excuse me, Shannon?
Yeah.
I just want to mention that those changes, the change conditions, have been distributed to the commissioners, and there are also copies available to the public at the front desk.
Thank you, Chris. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions: determine that this action is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act in accordance with Section 15303 of the SEQA guidelines, and Section 18.36.050 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, which is Class 3, New Construction or Conversion of Small Structures. And number two, approve the subdivision modification request to reduce the 20-foot mapped front setback from the property line on the Alpine Meadows Estates, Subdivision Unit Number 9, Lot 314, to allow construction of the proposed addition, subject to the conditions of approval as modified. Staff have received no public comments on the project, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Any questions?
Any of the commissioners? Commissioner Johnson has a question?
Yeah, I noticed here that the front of the garage is either 24 feet or 18 feet from the roadway, or I guess it's both, or and. So it's 18 feet from the roadway. And normally, for vehicles, you know, 24 feet would be enough, 20 feet may be right on the edge, but 18 feet may not accommodate most vehicles. So I guess maybe, from an engineering standpoint, it's been concerned in terms of snowplow in the past, and so I guess how do we analyze that, or how do we think about the 18 feet?
The project has been reviewed by the Engineering and Surveying Division and Department of Public Works, who are attending via Zoom. It's Monica Gromenos.
Good morning. This is Monica Gromenos from the Engineering and Surveying Division.
Did you hear the question, Monica?
I did. And Engineering Surveying, as well as Department of Public Works, have reviewed this application and are in support of it as proposed.
And what about the 18 feet and the potential snowplow issue? Is that an issue, or no?
We don't see it as a concern at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Johnson, do you have any further questions?
What?
Do you have any further questions?
I don't know if I really heard an answer for my question.
She said they don't have any concerns.
It's Monica Gromenos in the Engineering and Surveying Division, and they work in tandem with Department of Public Works on review of projects, and things like encroachment permits and other requirements that are needed when a development proposes to encroach into the front setback, to make sure that it's okay for snow removal. And there are conditions in the conditions of approval that speak to that. It's basically a, a hold harmless condition for any damage to the structure, which is a risk that the applicant and owner would have to take for snow removal operations. I could pull up the number of that condition. Let me get through these. Yeah, that is the condition to reference on that issue.
Do any other commissioners have questions for Ms. Hill?
Well, you know, I won't make a conclusion now, but I appreciate trying to answer that. Thank you.
Awesome. Is the applicant online? Ms. Hill, do you know if they're with us? Oh, they're here. Awesome. Can you come out and state your name?
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Todd Mather. I'm the architect on the project. You can see it was a challenging fit, trying to put this garage onto this property. We felt like we've done a pretty good job of it. I hope you were able to read through our detailed description of why we did what we did. That was delivered to staff back last summer, I guess. Commissioner Johnson, to just enlighten you perhaps a little bit more on the parking situation. Currently, there's a parking pad on the site, but it's not even on the site. It's partially on the site. So currently, the two, three cars can park across the property line, and really, the tails of those cars are out by the edge of the road now. So we think this is a great improvement. And often, with these types of variances, it's been my understanding that DPW generally requires 20 feet. But in this case, after reviewing our project in detail and understanding why we did what we did, they, as you heard, they don't have any concern about it. So that helps understand the parking situation, how we're improving it. My clients, Erin and Maya, drove up this morning. Go ahead.
Can you state your names from the record, and then I'm going to ask you a question?
My name is Erin Mairey.
My name is Maya Raconan.
Have you reviewed and are agreeable to the conditions as presented here today before the Planning Commission?
Yes, we have.
Awesome. Thank you. Any commissioners have questions for the applicants?
I just want to give a bit of clarification. On 12, have you started the process to seek an encroachment permit? Have you received one? Where is that process?
Are you referring to the abandonment permits?
No, the, the parking issue in the space, the easement to the roadway.
I think it would be better for Todd or Shannon to, to reference where we are with that.
Thank you. Thank you. You can sit down.
So the encroachment permits are required prior to building permit issuance? And so you guys haven't applied for that yet, right? So it hasn't been applied for at this time, but that's just a general, standard condition of approval, that that has to be done prior to the building permit being issued.
I get that. I was just wondering what, where they were in the process.
Oh, okay. So they have not applied for that yet? And part of the reason is because the project also requires an easement abandonment that has to be approved prior to that. So it's kind of just waiting.
I oversaid that. Sorry. Thank you.
Shannon, Gromenos has raised her hand again. As well as a decaying, is that a staffer, or?
Oh, Andy Dankin.
Is that a staffer, or?
DPW, Department of Public Works.
Okay, let's hear from Andy. You can unmute your mic.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Applicant, you can sit down.
So I just wanted to mention that, yes, the Public Works Division, our department, has reviewed this, and we're in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval. But I also wanted to note that I'm not sure where that 18-foot dimension from edge of pavement is coming from. We have that distance at roughly 23 and 1/2 feet from the face of garage to edge of roadway. So it, it, it does exceed the, the minimum requirement of 20 feet. Like I said, I'm not sure where that 18-feet dimension came from. But regardless, Public Works is in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval.
And Kelsey, it's somebody else. Thank you, Andy. Oh, Monica dropped her hand. Okay. Shannon, you want to come back up? You want to discuss what Andy just said about the 23 feet versus the 18 feet?
Yeah, I was trying to look on my tiny image of the site plan here to verify, because I didn't, I did mark it on my presentation. But yeah, I appreciate Andy's clarification on that, because we did check that it meets the minimum 20 feet, which is also in the zoning code, prior to bringing the project forward for hearing. I just didn't have it noted here. So I wasn't sure. I was trying to look on this small image and couldn't decipher what, what it is without looking at the larger site plan to verify.
So Commissioner Johnson was concerned about 18 feet, but it's not 18 feet.
No. Yeah, and I appreciate Andy's clarification on that.
Apparently, the 18 feet is just in the staff report. It's not, it's on page 205.
Oh, that...
No, it's not. It's on...
So there's a difference between the edge of pavement and the property line. So there are two different measurements.
Can you explain the difference between the edge of pavement and the property line you just mentioned?
Yeah, so the property line is closer to the structure than the edge of pavement, but when Department of Public Works and planning is reviewing in the zoning code, the distance is from the edge of pavement, because that's where the plow is working. And Andy or Monica may be able to provide better clarification on that, if that doesn't answer your question.
Yeah, so basically, the staff report says 24 and 18, but what we're hearing is 23.
Okay, the staff report. I'm sorry, I was looking at my presentation.
I think it's the roof, the roof eve. You look at what he's...
Sorry.
The roof eve is five, it shows.
Right.
Position 24 feet and 18 feet from the edge of pavement.
That's okay. I think Engineering has answered it probably correctly, and there's just an error in the staff report.
Okay. Yeah, I'm searching. I'm not seeing the 18 feet without looking at this a little
Monica has her hand raised. Hold on.
Go ahead, Monica.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I was able to pull up the plans and measure, and the 18 feet is from the roof eve, where the 23 and a half feet is from the face of garage, which would be applicable to parking a vehicle, which was the concern, I believe, in the original question.
Thank you, I think that cleared that up. Any, Mr. Commissioner Watts?
I was waiting for deliberations.
Okay, we'll wait for deliberations. We've got to do public comment first.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for commissioners? I think that cleared it up. Thank you, Monica. Okay, I'm going to open it for public comment on this topic. Does anybody in the audience like to speak? If you do, you've got three minutes. Seeing none, we're going to go to online. Kels, do we have anybody?
None online.
None online. Okay, great. I'm going to bring it back to commission for deliberations and any further question, more questions that you might have for staff. Commissioner Watts?
Can I go to a motion during deliberation, or do we?
Sure, you're welcome to do that, unless another commissioner has something that they'd like to say.
I have, but I can say them after your motion.
Okay.
The applicant would actually like to add a few words, if they may.
Certainly, let's let them do that first.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just wanted to mention that we bought our house in 2021. We love the area, we love being close to the Alpine Meadows ski area. What we're finding is that on very large snow seasons, since we are located below the road, the kind of valley fills with snow, and we have, we have a lot of trouble with access into the house. We've actually had to dig effectively a tunnel from our front door to the street to get out of the house when there's really big storms. And so this is really about, like, safety for ourselves and for our aging parents. That's why we really think this is an important improvement for our house. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I represent the eastern portion of the county, east of the Sierra Crest, and I'm glad you mentioned what you just did, because occasionally I've experienced similar issues with safety and coverage. And I think I'm very confident in what DPW has come up with in terms of the spacing, and I didn't see anything else in the project profile or the requirements that we, the county imposes that troubled me. So I would like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendations, number one and number two, as spelled out by staff.
Do we have a second?
I will second, but I just wanted to add a couple comments. So I have a very critical eye when it comes to variances. And what I appreciate about this situation is the fact that you went through the actual process, through to get a subdivision modification. Sounds like your neighbors weren't concerned, which I think is a really important aspect, and you actually followed the process before just building. So that, to me, is helpful, and knowing that there are other homeowners that are nearby that are doing something similar, which makes, which helps alleviate the perception that it's a special privilege, which can be a concern when variances are processed. So those are my comments with the second.
I'd like to make a comment, too, you know. I think I'd like to reinforce the importance of the 20-foot to the pavement of the driveways. And I know Public Works has come before us before, and it's a really significant concern when cars are not on the, or on, you know, in the pavement where the snowplows are trying to go through, particularly when they can't see the car. So at any rate, that, I want to reinforce that reason that the idea came up, is when it says 18 feet, that can be a concern. But 20 feet is what was required, and so we need to reinforce that.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a first and a second to approve items one and two. Clayton, can we take them together?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Roll call.
Watts?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Runteen?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Alves?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Yes. All right, that closes that item. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Ice Lakes Lodge condominiums tentative parcel map, conditional use permit, planned residential development. The planning commission is the final decision body for this item, and it will be presented by Stacy Wydra, principal planner. Did I say that right? Oh, yay. Thank you, Stacy. Where'd she go? Oh, I saw her. She was there. Sure.
Okay. Good morning, Cheryl Dahlgren and fellow planning commissioners. It's great to see you guys. I am Stacy Wydra, principal planner, up in our Tahoe City office, here today to present to you the request for a condominium project, for a tentative map and a conditional use permit for the Ice Lakes Lodge condominium project. Oh, there we go. So to quickly get you oriented as to where the site is located, it is located in the Soda Springs area, another highly impacted area with snow. And specifically, it's located at 1111 Soda Springs Road, in Soda Springs, or also known as Serene Lakes. And so the property that we are discussing today currently consists of three segments. And so as you see in the photograph here, there's the lodge parcel, which is currently developed with a, we call it the lodge parcel because it has had many uses over time. It was a restaurant, it was a lodge, and then it was converted to apartments. And I'll go into all of that in a bit, but, but for some reason, the lodge just sort of sticks, as how we call it, the Ice Lakes Lodge. And then all of these three seg, or parcels, or not parcels, excuse me, all the three components of the Ice Lakes Lodge are bisected by Soda Springs Road. And so the other two components, as you see here on this slide, consist of the one, I should say, the one south on Serene Road, has been used for the lodge parcel, and then the one to the east of Soda Springs Road with the little X, is also part of this overall parcel that we're dealing with, and is in discussion today. So there's two components to this project proposal today, and I'm going to take them one by one. So first is the parcel one, so the condominium parcel, and this is the actual lodge parcel. So as you see here, it is the parcel that is developed today. It is right off of Serene Lakes, and the applicants are requesting a tentative map and a conditional use permit for a planned residential development for the subdivision of the existing 2.86 acre property into two parcels. And so this first parcel is the existing Ice Lakes Lodge, and they are proposing to subdivide the existing four multifamily apartment units into four separate condominium units on just parcel one. Here are just some photographs to sort of get you acquainted as to what the existing conditions are today. It is fully developed and is operating as apartments. So then parcel two actually consists of parcels two A and two B. And again, a tentative map is being requested for the subdivision of these parcels to be considered with the entire 2.86 acre parcel, but create a single-family residential development parcel, where the development of the residence would be on parcel two B. And then two A, because it's bifurcated by the roadway, could be allowed for accessory uses, so such as a shed, or if they need it, well, I'll go into that in a minute, because there's a really small building envelope that's going to be created as a result of the development of, of that parcel. So here are some photographs of the existing conditions. It is important to note, these photographs were taken a bit ago, so the uses of this site has evolved over time. Today, I wasn't able to drive by on my way down, but it's, it has evolved. There's probably snow removal equipment parked there, or, you know, snowmobiles. There's, there's just been an evolving use of this property, but we are addressing the concerns of that property in this proposal today. So then parcel two B, which is on the opposite side, or the west side of Soda Springs Road, this is where the single-family residential building site is proposed. And as you can see, it's not as disturbed as the other parcels. So as we review these, these types of requests, we always have to ensure that it complies with the code. And this request does comply with both the general plan dens, or excuse me, the general plan designation of medium density residential, as well as the zoning district, which is resort combining district design Sierra. It is important to note that there are no expansions proposed to the, to parcel one, so where the lodge exists today. There has been variances applied and approved for the location of the lodge many, many years ago. And then on parcel two B, we are proposing that a building envelope be created on, excuse me, on both parcel two A and parcel two B, to really define where that building area can be located, after applying all of the development standards of the zoning ordinance. So then a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the CEQA compliance, this California Environmental Quality Act. And through this process, there were a number of items addressed and mitigated of standard practice, so nothing really out of the ordinary, with the exception of the agricultural timberland buffer zones, which is applicable to neighborhood compatibility. And so within our general plan land use diagram, and under the section seven of our general plan agricultural timberland, there is a buffer zone that is required for parcels that are along, I don't know if I have a pointer, let me see. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Did I, oh, no, there we go. Well, I'll just speak to it. So the, the buffer zone is actually applied to all of the parcels that are in the green, so the forest, I don't know if you can see the F O R, that are to, oh, yeah, this button? Okay. It keeps doing that? Okay, I'm sorry, you guys. So, so as a result of the adjoining general plan designation of agricultural timberland, it has been recognized that there could be potential impacts to residential development next to agricultural operations or timber operations. And so as such, a buffer should be applied to residential parcels. And so unfortunately, the four RS, single-family residences that you see just above where parcel two B is, those, the buffer wasn't considered at that time, when those residences went in. So the 100-foot buffer, which is suggested, was not applied. But when reviewing and going through the environmental review process for this project, we, we learned that that buffer should have, should be applied to this parcel as well. And so what we did through this environmental analysis is we considered what exists today, you know, what kind of setbacks do they have? We also reached out to the landowner that is directly adjacent to parcel two B. It is the Truckee Donner Land Trust. And while understanding they may not forever be the landowner, but this area behind has historically been used for cross-country skiing in the winter, hiking, biking, you know, really, the, the activity of a full agricultural or timber harvesting was, was not very likely. So then what we did was we kind of considered, okay, what are, what are typical setbacks applied when we are addressing, you know, potential impacts? And so a 30-foot setback was determined to be sufficient. And this setback, actually in the general plan, allows for it to be considered and reviewed and analyzed through the environmental review process. So, so we are recommending that a 30-foot setback from the forest, so the green parcel section of, of this slide, be applied to parcel two B, and also a right-to-farm disclosure. So any future homeowner of, of this property two B, should it be approved, would know that there's a potential, you know, potential impacts that could occur relative to, you know, timber harvesting or agricultural next to them. There we go. So the conditional use permit component of the request is for a planned residential development. A planned residential development is a consideration to provide some flexibility for residential-type developments. And as such, only the lodge is being, is requesting this. And so through the requirements and standards for the planned, planned developments, the project complies with those residential, or planned residential development standards, and there's no inconsistencies with, with applying that planned development. So then throughout the process, there has been community outreach, and we did go to the Donner Summit Municipal Advisory Council in January. And during that meeting, we did learn of concerns of parcel two A and its uses that has occurred over time, kind of what I explained at the beginning of my presentation. And so as a result of hearing the property owners that came out to that meeting, we have elected to apply condition number 24, really guiding the developer of this, these two parcels, parcel two A and two B, that, you know, prior to recordation, we really need this lot to be in conformance to its, to its residential use. You know, parking that has been there, overflow parking, that was all kind of just the, just, it just happens. So, so we haven't, we don't really have any approvals for those types of uses for parcel two A. So then, prior to I, to me going into my recommendation, we did receive a letter from Mr. Bridges, and I believe all of you received it.
Mr. Bridges plans to make comment. He provided me the letter, so at that time, I'll pass it out.
Okay, oh, great. So I'll address the, I don't want to.
Address it following.
I'll drop, okay, great. So my apologies, I was fully prepared to address it. So with that, I will go to staff's recommendation, and we are asking that the planning commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration, state clearinghouse number 2024080440, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan prepared pursuant to section 15070 of the CEQA guidelines, and section 18.16.010 negative declarations of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, supported by findings in the staff report. Staff is also asking that the planning commission approve the tentative parcel map for the subdivision of the existing Ice Lakes Lodge building into four separate condominium units on one parcel, and create one new single-family residential lot, as identified on the tentative map, and subject to the conditions of approval and supported by findings in the staff report. Also, requesting that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit to allow for the application of the planned residential development ordinance, to subdivide the existing Ice Lakes Lodge building into four separate condominium units, subject to the conditions of approval and supported by the findings in the staff report. While I will, Mr. Bridges will bring it up, but we, I would like to make a correction to one of the conditions of approval, so I can either do that now or wait till afterwards. It is a typo.
Go ahead and do that now.
Okay, great. So I would like to address and modify condition number 25 with our recommendation, that the second sentence is, needs to be corrected to read that the development of parcel two A, so currently it reads as two B, but it should reference two A. So the sentence would read as follows, "The development of parcel two A shall either be concurrent with the construction of the single-family residence on parcel two B or thereafter."
Thank you for that clarification, Stacy.
Yeah.
I'm going to bring it back to the commission if they have any questions for you, commissioners? Commissioner Beckler?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what, what was the correction? It was for the conformance, because I think two A was the one that had the current issues identified, so what was your correction?
So condition number 25, I have a typo.
What is it, which page?
Oh.
Page 27, too. Sorry, we have a big book.
Yeah. I can pull it up.
Our paging is different.
25?
Yes, correct.
Oh, okay. And what was the change?
So the second sentence, I need to replace the first reference of two B to, to say two A.
The second reference?
So to read, "The development of parcel two A shall either be concurrent with the construction of the single-family residence on parcel two B." of the single-family residence on parcel two B or thereafter. So two, two B is referenced twice, and so it needs to.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Gotcha. Okay, it doesn't change anything about the conformity of two A.
Right, correct. It's just a.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
Commissioner Ronteen?
Yeah, you, you have the condition of approval twenty-four. Come on, there it is. Condition of approval twenty-four. When I look at one slide just before, I understand you've got those updated conditions, but there's, in small print, it says parcel two A is marginal for any new construction, but might provide for accessory structures. So how do you reconcile building a home to any new, any new structures with your notes on a, on the diagram?
Oh, on the fi, on the map?
Yes.
This, this one?
Yes.
Oh, gosh, you can't really read that, can you? I think I have it. Yeah, so, so this is the tentative parcel map. And so at, when, when, if approved, and they come in for a final map, staff will work with them going through all of these conditions of approval to make sure that the language that is listed in the conditions of approval is listed on the map. This was the applicant's request, and we worked with them to, to somewhat negotiate that language. But the condition, as the conditions read in the staff report, will be applied to the final map before recordation.
Okay, that's not the diagram I'm looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's got language to the left. You had it there for a second.
Oh, whoops, okay.
Keep going.
It's hard to read, though, this one?
Right there.
Yeah, okay.
Where it, so what phase of mapping was that?
This is just the tentative map that was submitted with the application.
Okay, and you've, so you've updated, you've removed the language that it's for an accessory structure and it would be eligible for single-family residence? What, what's the intent?
Not yet. The, the, when the fi, so this is just the tentative map.
Right.
But when the final map comes in, the language will be required to be updated to reflect what the conditions of approval.
And the intent is.
Just to, just to maybe clarify, as Ms. Wydra mentioned during the presentation, I think the intent with parcel two, two A is for some sort of accessory structure. Perhaps when the applicant speaks, they can maybe speak a little bit more towards what their intent is with building out the two B and two A.
Yeah, that, that was what I was curious about, what the final intent is. Whether it's going to be accessories or a single-family residence.
Yeah, and I, and I can share, too. There, there will be a rather small building envelope that is created for parcel two A because it has to address this water core setbacks of Lake Dezura and Serene, and Serene Lake, or, excuse me, Serena Creek, as well as the two front setbacks. They have a front setback and a street side setback. So I'm not sure if I, I did not. So there will be building envelopes, and I believe they're in your packet, that show the exact area of development. And then the use has to be accessory to a single-family. So like a shed or an ADU, or, you know, if, if they can fit within the confines of all the.
Sure, the applicant can shed a little more light on this.
Absolutely.
Commissioners? Commissioner Beckler?
I have a follow-up question to that. So in the parcel two A, I had confirmed with planning staff that the, both on parcel two A and parcel one, that the building footprint will not impede in the water core setback, which is fifty feet. So on parcel two A, upon, you know, moving forward with building some sort of accessory structure, it would still conform to that setback, correct? Okay.
Or they, yeah. Yes, that is the intent of this map. But there is always, of course, a variance request.
They would have to go through a variance.
Public process, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, just a brief question. On parcel one, there's four condos that are proposed. But does the zoning, would the zoning law offer more?
It could, yes.
So there's potential, and that would be by right probably at that time, right?
Well, they still have to go through this process to, but the, the, what they're doing is they're just trying to condominiumize the existing footprint or floor area that exists today. So no expand, they're not proposing to add more units off the building. They're just taking the space inside, the airspace, if you will, and subdividing it so that the units can be sold individually and not held in one ownership.
Commissioner Johnson, to, to add more units, that would be a modification to the.
It'd be a what now?
It would be a modification, and so that would need to come back through a process.
Okay, so we may hear more in the future that, possibly.
Possibly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner questions for Ms. Wydra? Thank you. Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Could we ask the applicant to come up and state your name?
Good morning. My name is Andy Casano. I'm a land use planner and land surveyor with Nevada City Engineering, representing the applicant and the owners. Have the owners with me today, not all of them, but some of them, Rob Tucker and Roland Al. And we're here to answer your questions.
Can I have the applicants come up so I can ask them a question? Then we'll ask you some questions, so you can just hold tight right there. Can you state your name for the record, sir?
Rob Tucker.
And you're one of the owners?
Yep.
And sir?
And Roland Al.
Have you reviewed and agreed to the conditions as they were described today in the presentation by the staff?
Yes.
Thank you, you can sit down. Commissioners, do we have any questions for? Sorry, I forgot your name.
Andy Casano.
Andy. Any questions for Andy?
As, as long as he's finished.
No, go ahead.
Let's see, I just wanted to, first of all, thank Stacy Wydra and the planning staff for their work on the, this project. We've been in process with the county for a very long time. Just to kind of go through the history real quick again, this was a lodge with restaurant and bar, and so it was previously made into four apartments, story by story. So the intensity of this thing to the neighborhood was drastically reduced at that point in time. As we moved into condos, the area of two A and two B is kind of excess baggage to the condos. There's no reason why the condo association should have to take care of the care and feeding of this land into the future. We looked at making two A and two B units for, lots for two units. But as Stacy pointed out, when you look at two B and you put in all of the snow storage easements, the drainage easements, setbacks, there's just really nothing left there that would accommodate a house. I don't even think a variance could work there. But, you know, maybe it could be something associated with the house on two B, like a storage shed, or maybe a gazebo, or something that would be an accessory unit. And that's the way the conditions are written. I was really surprised this morning to see that this project is the victim of a document drop. A document drop for you veteran planning commissioners or not veteran planning commissioners is when there's been a process in place for over two years on this, but suddenly on the day of the planning commission meeting, a five or six-letter, page letter comes in in an effort to try to confuse it and make it more complicated. The thing about this application is no matter how big that letter is, you can't make it more complicated. The basic effect, the physical effect of approving this project is there may, in the future, be development of a house on two B, and it may have an accessory structure on two A. I don't know that the applicants are going to sell this parcel. Maybe the neighbor should buy it if it becomes available. But that's how simple it is. Now, in light of the fact that Mr. Bridges is going to testify and introduce his letter, what I'd like to do is reserve the ability to come back after the public hearing's been opened to address issues that come up during the public hearing. If that would be okay, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Okay.
And just for the record, we have not received this letter because it came in at midnight last night. So I understand Mr. Bridges is going to speak to the letter. But Kelsey, do you have copies to hand us? Okay, so we're going to get it right now.
Okay, I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right, so now I'm going, oh, does anybody have any questions for Andy? Well, he'll come back. I'm going to open it for public comment for anybody in the room. Is there anybody in the room, from the public, who would like to speak to this? Certainly, please. You have three minutes, and state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, Chair Dahlgren and Commissioners. My name is Andrew Bridges. And I'm sorry to have received an ad hominem attack today. I am not a professional with respect to land use. And I was trying to pull together information. I spoke to Ms. Wydra several times in the last couple of days. And I decided, I didn't realize there'd be a three-minute limit, but I'm glad I wrote the letter because of the three-minute limit. A couple of things. We are, my wife and I are homeowners next door. We are right here, lot number four. We've owned the house for twenty-three years. It has been primarily a holiday and vacation home, although my son lived there for five years when he worked on the summit and in Tahoe City. He's now getting a PhD in environmental economics in Reno. So we, and we don't rent it out. We are homeowners here with a vested interest. The lodge, it was a sad day when the lodge ran out of money and closed, twenty-six units. But this proposal has an easy part and a wickedly difficult and messy part. Let me make it clear. We do not oppose the condominiumization, condominiumization of the lodge, okay? The complex part is what Mr. Casano referred to as the excess baggage. Because the proposal for this excess baggage does not make sense for a number of reasons. Number one, it's defined as a single-family parcel with a roadway going in the middle and something that's not really buildable on the small side, maybe a gazebo, but that sort of doesn't make sense. But also, what's not clear, because you don't see it on this map, is that the building envelope on two B is severely constrained. And they are talking about putting the building on the right side of that lot at a flat-ish area above a steep area, I guess a twenty-three percent slope. Half of that, and I direct folks to page, I think, two hundred and twenty-two of the materials.
You've got one minute left, Mr. Bridges.
Sorry?
You have one minute left, Mr. Bridges.
Yes, anyway, but the point is, the, the, the building is, that lot is constrained, is half-covered by snow storage easements and drainage easement. It's not practically buildable. They said maybe they won't build on it, but this plan should not go into effect with something that makes no practical sense. Because of the time limitations, I asked the commission to read the letter thoroughly. There are a lot of points in it. I would like to add a couple of things. I did not explicitly object to the hundred-foot, the change from the hundred-foot buffer to the thirty-foot buffer and the minimum negative declaration. We do oppose that. Also, there is an existing subdivision of nine lots. This is subdividing a subdivision, and it's not clear that any process has been gone through with respect to the existing CCRs. Moreover, I just want to point out that it, they, they were, they put these condominiums on sale years ago.
Your time is up, Mr. Bridges. We are going to take time to read your letter, but I appreciate your comments.
But I do invite further questions. And if I may, I can submit some photographs.
Not right at this time. Thank you, Mr. Bridges, I appreciate it. Do we have anybody else public comment, Kelsey? No, no more public comment. I'm going to take five minutes. I'm going to ask if we can take five minutes. And so just so we can read this, since it just got handed to us and he wasn't able to address all the issues in the letter. So at this time, we're going to take five minutes, and we're going to read the letter, and then we'll get back to questions from the applicant.
Well, that's why I So you're going to take a crack at this after this, after we reconvene. Thanks.
I'm going to reconvene this meeting. Mr. Bridges, we would like to see your photographs, please. Can you hand them to the clerk and she'll pass them out? Oh.
Mr. Bridges, you can provide whatever documentation you want, but whatever you'd provide will be kept by the clerk, so.
That's fine.
It's the clerk.
This is a photo from Google Maps.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Poholy, Director Poholy, for a moment.
Yes, thank you, Chair Dolgren. Staff has had an opportunity to review Mr. Bridges' letter and like the opportunity to have Ms. Weidra provide a response to the letter that was received.
Thank you, Ms. Weidra.
So does, can any
I'm sorry, Mr. Bridges. Clayton, help me out.
So each public commenter has provided three minutes. You've had your opportunity to provide public comment.
This is to provide the photographs.
Which you have provided, but that doesn't include an opportunity for additional public comment if, if in fact
All I will do is introduce the photographs.
If you could just wait for one second. If we were to provide additional time to you, we would have to provide additional time to others. Your comment period has already concluded and the three minutes have been concluded. So you don't have another opportunity to speak at this time unless the chair has specific, or the commission has specific questions of you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Um, Stacey, um, Ms. Weidra?
Yes, thank you. So I think the, the easiest way to address all of the items, I'm just going to kind of go walk through the letter, because I, I too read it this morning. And so I think that just might be the easiest way to make sure I address each and every issue that I, I heard from Mr. Bridges raised in his letter. So, you know, the, kind of going down the, the letter, his concern with parcels 2A by it being bisected by the road and the dangerous crossing between the two uses. The, this is a dead-end road and the, the, the associated uses, you know, it, what future uses come, we will look at how those interact with each other. I do have roads and, or engineering and surveying, Monica Germanos, online too, who can also assist with that. But something that, and I'll, I'll go over this again in, in my response, but the road improvements will be required. So road improvements, you know, right now, it's, it's kind of a haphazard. A lot of people use it to provide access to the many, many trails that are beyond this end of this dead-end road. Also, in the wintertime, there are a lot of, you know, snowmobile access, skier trails and things like that. So just like with any residential subdivision or newly created single-family residence, the impacts of the road and the, the way this, the subdivision is laid out will be considered. So meaning, you know, road distances from the driveway as people are coming in and out. And, and then the associated uses crossing the road, you know, again, it's at a dead-end road. So staff does not see any major concerns with the two parcels being bisected by the road. Then the previous, you, sir, but sir, thank you.
Mr. Bridges.
So then, another concern that was raised was the previous uses of par, of proposed parcel 2A and 2B and the overflow parking and the snow storage relative to that. The overflow parking was a use of the lodge. It is no longer a use, or it was never acknowledged as an allowed use by the county. So it's just sort of been used over time. You know, it's a vacant lot, improved over time. So the county can acknowledge an overflow parking use at this time. However, the snow storage, the concern was that the snow storage, or I'm sorry, with the snow storage, we do have snow storage easements in place that will accommodate and address the snow that is being removed from that portion of the road that has to provide access to the residence.
Stacy, can I interrupt you for one second?
Of course.
Sir, I closed public comment. I'm sorry, the time is over. I closed public com, I closed public comment, sir. I'm sorry, the time is passed. I'm sorry, sir. I closed, we're going to ask questions. The commission's going to ask questions of the staff. So hopefully we'll get your corrections at that time. Public comment is closed. If you would take a seat, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you. Go ahead, Stacy.
Okay, thank you. And then, so, so then I'll, I'll move on to a concern he had, that was raised about parcel 2A being a separate residence. The condition of approval number 25 in, in your staff packet does address any, you know, future uses or development of that, of parcel 2A and that it has to be accessory to the single-family residence. So in other words, it can't be another single-family residence that is sold or rented out separately. So I hope that addresses that concern. And then the letter also addresses zoning, that the parking was allowed by zoning. And I just want to clarify that, again, the county has never acknowledged that parking or that parcel 2A as a parking lot. Yes, it has historically been used as overflow parking for the lodge, the restaurant, many, many years ago, and just has sort of evolved over time. It's parking for snow removal vehicles that, that plow the streets. But with this development, if the tentative map is approved, those uses would then be organized into what's allowed per parcel 2A, which will be notes on the map to address those uses. And then also through the, the county code, what's allowed in the resort zoning district. So then, the, there was some concern about the parking, so the parking impacts of not allowing folks to park on the lodge parcel 2A and that skiers and snowmobilers use the land beyond. And now if this parcel 2A was to be developed, they'd have to park in the road. I can address that in, between the months of, or excuse me, between the time period of November 15th to May 1st, vehicles are not allowed to be parked on the road. So they, they will be ticketed, but that, that's a separate user operation than what, what is being considered today. But the county could address those parking impacts is what I'm, what I'm getting at with the removal of that parking lot of what exists in parking 2A today. So, and then the applicant, or excuse me, the, the commenter also identified quite a few constraints of the proposed parcel 2B and specifically to easements and slope of the parcel. And there are a number of easements on the parcel. And however, these are typical for a snow country area. Snow storage easements actually will extend for the entire frontage of both parcel 2A and 2B. And that's an effort to help clear all the snow from the road, just to gain a little bit more land area for our roads crew to, to store snow. And so when you go through a discretionary permit like this one, the, the county can ask for those easements on those properties. Those easements do exist in some capacity today, but they will increase. So we will gain more snow storage on the two parcels, parcel 2A and 2B. With regards to the slope, the slope will be considered with the development. The building envelope was really kind of sandwiched in between all of the easements that I mentioned, together with the 30-foot buffer setback, where normally 10 feet would be required if it was just a standard residential parcel with no timberland or agricultural land behind it. But the, I think the one thing to point out is that this is just a tentative map to, to record a lot. When a development were to come in, at that time, the development proposed on that parcel for a single-family residence will have to comply with all the building codes at that time, including fire code. So if, if they can't make a driveway that, you know, is too steep, then they can't, they won't be able to build it. We have to get that fire clearance before we would be able to sign off on that building permit. There were some concerns about the propane tank and its locations. And the, the location of the propane tank will be considered when a residential building permit comes in. But that location of the propane tank has to conform with the gas companies and our building codes. So there's, again, it's, it's a, a future item that will be addressed if a building permit comes in and will be identified at that time. Then another concern was raised about the 30-foot setback for the agricultural timberland and requesting 100-foot. As I mentioned in my, in my presentation, that there are already four other single-family residences that are actually within that 100-foot setback, because it's measured from the property line of the residential parcels uniquely. So we, again, we did a thorough, you know, review of this setback and what are the impacts of that. And staff found that through that environmental process, which is allowed by Section 7 of the general plan, which is the agricultural and forestry resources section, that 30 feet was, was sufficient to address any potential concerns. And then the snow burden of Soda Springs Road, so the, the commenter had some concerns about how currently the, the snow is mounted, if you will, in the road. But if the driveways come in for the single-family residence, the snow will have to be pushed farther down that, that portion of the road. And that is, you know, an operation of our roads department. And so if there is a driveway that they have to plow in front of to provide, you know, in and out access, they, they will do that. So yes, the snow will be pushed a little bit farther down that portion of the road. And then I did address condition number 25 to, to correct that. And then I'm going to just, I think for, for, how did, the easiest way to do this, number eight of the commenter's letter, I'm just going to go down question by question, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
So the will serves, so the question is, does the existing water and sewer system serve both parcels 2A and 2B? Yes, and will serves will be required at the time of the development of those two properties. But I, I can tell you that prior to our environmental review and processing of this, we did get indication from those special agencies and districts that they can serve the properties. And as proposed, you know, they receive the, the project description. The gravel road between 2A and 2B, there will be improvements required by the engineering and surveying division also. So when, when the driveway comes in for parcel 2A or 2B, depending on how they want to access, the road improvements up to that driveway will be required. So if the driveway is proposed at the far end of parcel 2B, then the road, Soda Springs Road, will have to be improved all the way to that, to where the driveway starts. So the gravel portion will be paved at the ti, or will be required to be paved at the time they come in for a building permit and proceed with, with the development of that part, of parcel 2A and then subsequently 2B, excuse me, 2B and then subsequently 2A if they don't go together. And then access to the, the building envelope, there was a question of can, can improvements go through the snow storage easement and drainage easement? And yes, driveways may, structures may not. So just to, to clarify that. And then, again, we will review also the driveway approach as it goes through the snow storage easement and the drainage easements. They will also have to get approval by the, the people who hold interest in that drainage easement of, you know, their crossing. So that is, again, to come with the develop, or when they come in for the development of that parcel. And then the number D, or letter D, where would propane need to be stored? Again, the storage of the propane tank will be to, will be determined when they come in for the building permit. And they have to adhere to all the rules and regulations for the location of that propane tank. And then letter E with regards to the CCNRs. Condition number 28 does require that the CCNRs be provided and it, and it outlines what is, what needs to be addressed with those CCNRs. Unfortunately, I can't, I can't speak to the existing CCNRs, but I would imagine that they will be either, you know, null and void and a new set would, would come in, or they can amend the ones they have. So, but that's through the DRE, the Department of Real Estate. So, but again, it's a condition of approval that they have to demonstrate to us that they have provided those CCNRs and they are in, are in compliance with the Subdivision Map Act relative to the recordation of the final map. And, and then last item, number, letter F, fire access. Fire will have to sign off on, on the building plans as well. Fire has reviewed the proposal. They did not provide us with any objections or concerns with the design as, as provided in front of you today. But again, I stress that when they come in for any development of that parcel, fire will need to sign off before we can issue that building permit.
Thank you, Ms. Weidra. I wanted to remind the commission that we're just here for the mitigated negative declaration in the tentative parcel map, as you had said. I'm going to bring it back to the question for additional questions from the commissioners to, Ms. Weidra? I'm going to start on my left. George, did you have anything? And I'm going to go down. No, any? Mr. Commissioner Ronteen, did you have any questions?
I think you answered the, the roadway would be paved, the extension of Soda Springs Road. You mentioned that that was a dead-end road in the winter, because I know that road.
I misspoke. I, I, I think what I meant is it's, it's, it's an unimproved road.
Correct.
So, so yes, I did, did misspeak. It does provide access, but it's not a, it's not a formal, you know, it's a gravel dirt road.
Not an improved, right.
Unimproved.
But I know it can go all the way to Forest Hill if you
Yep.
I think that was, well, we're going to have additional deliberations later.
We will. This is just questions for staff. Commissioner Beckler?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I had the same question about the road access. So just make sure I understand this. The, the proposed parcel, the one that is currently proposed as 2A and 2B, that currently is a single parcel or is 2A part of one right now?
So actually, all three. So the lodge, so parcel one and parcel 2A and 2B are all part of one parcel currently today.
One parcel, okay. And then for parcel 2A and 2B, and I know we went over this, but I got a little bit confused with it, the questions, the Q and A. So if that parcel was existing today as a contiguous parcel bisected by private road, whatever, that is, that it does happen, would it be allowed to be subdivided under, based on the acreage, the minimum, because I know there, like in rezag, you have to have a minimum of 2.3 acres, otherwise you can't subdivide. So can you help me understand that part of this?
Yeah, so, so, so I think just to answer your question, while, by land area? Because the road, right, that, so by land area, yes, it could be subdivided into its own parcel. However, once you start dissecting it, so meaning adding the development standards, what are the existing conditions? Do we actually have a legal or a developable parcel that doesn't result in the need for a variance or need for other? So in working with the applicants, we acknowledged, hey, there's a lot of constraints on 2A. And, you know, it's, I mean, the, the building envelope site plan is in your packets. And, and I apologize, I thought I had it on the slide. But, but you can see, it's a very small triangle, you know, it, it results in a very small parcel. So, so to answer your question, it would not be good planning or practice of planning if that parcel were to be a separate individual for sale parcel.
Would not.
Would not.
And just to add to what Ms. Weidra said, if you want to, to reference the building footprints, it is in Attachment B and on page, or on page 222.
222 of our binder?
Correct.
Okay. So just to make sure I heard that correct, Stacy. So you're saying in, if you just take parcel 2A and 2B as a So you're saying in, if you just take parcel 2A and 2B as a parcel, you're saying that based on the, even though they can split it because of the acreage and the minimum requirements, that it fall, it checks that box. When you apply the constraints, when you would go to do something, that's where it gets into the situation where like the, the logic question comes into place that is it actually developable? And so I guess, and I'm trying not to get into deliberation here, but maybe I'll just ask the question. So then if that's the case, why is that particular parcel being proposed to be split as part of this? If planning is saying that it's, doesn't meet the sort of logic test?
No, 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 it's not proposed to be split. It is, it is with parcel two. So we are only doing, so effectively of the map, there is only two parcels. So there's parcel one and parcel two. Parcel two has two components to it because it's, it's segregated by the road.
Okay.
So, so yeah, no, 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 no. And then parcel one is, you know, doing four units of the existing.
Right.
So I, I apologize if I, if I.
No, it's, it's not your, you don't need to apologize.
I do think that we reference that they would have separate APNs.
They would because of the, yeah.
So one parcel with two APNs is what, is the way that it would be approached. That's not the truth.
We'll, we'll give the applicant a chance when they're done.
Yeah, I'll hold my question back. Yeah, so I would like to, because yeah, that's the part that I'm kind of getting stuck on.
We'll have the applicant come back up after.
And then the, the, this, the setback from that forest area, now just to make sure I understand this, that the setback of that forested area, which is currently sort of managed by the, not Placer Land Trust, but the Tahoe Land Trust, worse, that what you're saying is that that typically has a, is it a 100-foot setback of a residence should be 100 feet from that forest zoning? Is that correct?
Correct. From the, the property line that borders that agricultural, so the agricultural general plan land use designation.
Okay. And the four existing single-family residences, which are four lots, those meet that 100? They do not.
They do not.
So can you say, and I know you said this, but just to make sure.
It's okay. No, no worries. It's a lot. No, so unfortunately, when those lots were being subdivided, the, maybe the, the planner at the time didn't, didn't know of this requirement. And so unfortunately, it was not applied.
Not applied? Okay.
Yeah.
And can you give an idea what is applied? Like what's the distance?
Of what we're proposing?
No, on those existing four. Do you have any like range?
Yeah, I, I do. I have, do you have, oh, yeah. I can hear, so, so this kind of gives you the idea. Now, what's, what's not shown on here, which is hard, is the property line. But these properties at a minimum are meeting 10 feet because that is the required rear yard sep, rear, rear yard setback for the RS zoning district. So, and the property lines, if, and Chris, if you go. Okay. So I'll just see if I can, oh, oops. So here you can see, so see where parcel 2B is?
Yes.
You can kind of get an idea of where the property line heads north for those other parcels. And so they do not meet 100-foot buffer setback.
Okay.
And, you know, typically in this area too, you want to be as close to the road as possible so you, so you have less snow removal. But, but in this case, none of these parcels actually maintain that 100-foot.
100-foot. And for this proposed parcel, the portion on 2B, the proposed setback is what?
We are proposing a 30-foot.
30 instead of the 100, okay. And the other four lots are also impeding in that current setback?
That's correct. Or we're not allow the consideration of a reduced setback like we're considering with this one.
Okay. Because they went through, for whatever reason, it wasn't applied in the past. Okay. And then that helps. And then one final question, just on the CCNR process. So just to make sure I'm clear, so if CCNRs are changed because of any changes in the conditions or of this, that happens after this approval, then that process would trigger?
Correct. But before recordation of the final map.
Okay.
So they kind of go hand in hand.
Okay.
They get recorded with the recordation of the map because it's a, a legal document that informs the subdivision.
And in that process, it's, I know it's not a county process, it sounds like it's guided by the Department of Real Estate, the homeowners association or whatever comprises this area, they potentially could provide input or that it could possibly not go through potentially. And then if there were changes that were needed to make this fit, it, I'm just curious, is that a possibility or not?
No, so the, the homeowners association would not, it's my understanding, would not govern the CCNRs for the, for parcel one, so for the lodge parcel, because that, that, that's within their confines of their property.
Right, yeah, I'm referring to 2A and 2B.
And, yeah, so similarly, because 2A and 2B are with this subdivision, they would all be like a unit, if you will, relative to the CCNRs.
Okay.
Commissioner Beckler, I missed, Commissioner Beckler, read out what your question.
Just one final quick question, I promise, Mark. Just to make sure, so it was, was there a notification done? I'm assuming the standard 300-foot notification? And then I do have a question for the applicant when he comes up about was there sort of additional outreach to the neighbors to see if there were any concerns, sort of separate from the county standard process? That'll be my question for the applicant, but that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Wax.
And I think I have more of a statement than a question, but I.
Form it in a question.
You may, you may want to respond to me when I do this. I thought I heard during the presentation, I can't recall, but was the owner's represent, representative or staff, that when we were talking about parcel 2B, that there was a reference to what could, what would likely go on parcel 2A, which would be some sort of accessory element, not really a living structure. Well, I shouldn't say it that way, but.
That's correct. Like, for example, a garage could be located on 2A that services the single-family residence on 2B.
Or a gazebo.
Or a gazebo, yeah.
Or a beach house, little accessory unit or something. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, do you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I think maybe it's just a clarification now. On 2A.
Can you get closer to your mic? Rich, can you get closer to your mic?
On, on 2A, the, there's a existing parking lot. And so if that's going to change, it's going to be up to the property owner to pass an offer, he can do that. So that's their responsibility to make sure that they deal with whatever's going on in that par, parcel right now. Okay.
Thank you. I'll bring the applicant and the owner's representative back up. If you'd like to make a statement first and then we have additional questions for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Andy Casano, again, planner and land surveyor. Stacy did a great job of addressing the letter, so I'll be very brief. And I would say that we greatly appreciate the support that Mr. Bridges offered for the condominium plan, which is our main intent here today. I guess the easiest way to say this is all of the issues that were raised in Mr. Bridges' letter are addressed in the conditions of approval. You've now had a chance to read the conditions and a brief chance to read the letter, but I think you'd have to agree with that. A lot of discussion on how 2A and 2B works. Again, all sto, snow storage easements would remain and the demand is a little bit less because it's not a lodge anymore. Future building on parcel two will be subject to all of the prevailing requirements for the building code and fire code and all of the conditions of approval in your staff report today. So it's got a, had a lot of scrutiny. All the property will be remaining according to the CCNRs and zoning codes. So any CCNRs that apply to 2A and 2B now, we can't unilaterally change those, so whatever they are, they're going to stay. But what we will do is have additional CCNRs just for the condominium plan. I think she went through the questions pretty easily. Water and sewer are definitely available. No changes to the roads are, are intended except for the encroachment permit for the driveway. Access to all the lots would be as existing, subject to CCNRs, building codes and so on. Rob, I think, wanted to make a comment if I could, and then we'll be here to answer any, all your questions.
Thank you. Can you state your name for the record?
Yeah, Rob Tucker, and I'm one of the three owners of the lodge. And sorry if I looked impatient, I felt like I didn't want to waste your time with some of the, Stacy did a great job, but it seemed like there was a little confusion. And I also appreciate Andrew and Bill being here. We're local, this is a family vacation property, and we live in the area, born and raised, Roland lives in Auburn. So we want to be good neighbors and I think we've always tried to be. One thing I want to clear up, the, if you can bring up the, the three parcels, any, any of them work, these three parcels are currently separate assessors parcels.
1, 2A and 2B.
They are three separate assessors parcels. The confusion is that they, as a whole, all three of them are lot number nine of the Ice Lakes 2 subdivision.
Gotcha.
So we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, and then 1, 2, 3.
You got to get back to the mic, sorry.
We've got eight single-family residences, including Mr. Bridges and Bill's. And then this is part, lot nine is three assessors parcels. So it's currently bifurcated, as we said, by the roads. I mean, so I get it, that's probably not great planning, but that's what's happening. Now, originally in this process, we proposed, because it makes sense for that very reason, to separate these three current separate APNs into three separate lots, be, they would become lot nine, 10 and 11 of the current eight-lot subdivision. Seemed to make sense partly because the overflow was used when the lodge was a 26-room lodge and bar and restaurant, that we came in and converted it to four family multi-dwellings. The planning commission, building department, we've been approved for four multifamily dwellings, and that's how it exists. Roland's got two floor, two units, my family and our other partner. That's how it's being currently listed. And I appreciate Mr. Bridges acknowledging that there's really no controversy on that. It's, it is as it exists. Whether you decide that way today, it's going to be used going forward. So we, I'll, I'll stay away from the condo conversion because it is what it is. And originally, when this process started, like I said, we proposed, number one, on a grander scale, we proposed to do the condominium conversion and the tentative map and all that separately. Based on input from staff, we decided to do it together because I'm shocked that this has been, we're wasting your time. This is one of the simplest projects, I would think, that's come along forever because we're not proposing to build anything or change anything. But anyways, we bought the lodge, it's no longer the intense use of a 26-room bar, restaurant, hotel, and so these parcels are kind of not necessary anymore, particularly for the parking. Originally, we proposed to separate them into three additional lots, but because of all the restrictions on 2A and feedback from the staff saying that might not even be buildable, they suggested that we just combine it into, or you separate into two lots. So we've got the lodge parcel, or lot will remain the same, and then 2A and 2B will be lot number 10 now. Our, like I said, our plan was to separate those into lot 10 and 11, but knowing that that one has, so that's why you're hearing the connection between those twos, too, because those are two, two assessors parcels that will make up one lot. Now, I get it, it's bifurcated, but it's already, these three lots are bifurcated by 2 Streets. So we're actually reducing that issue now. Serene Road won't bifurcate it. So anyways, I think there was maybe some misinformation in, when we say parcel and lot, these are already three separate APNs. And I, I could go through Mr., and I really do appreciate Mr. Bridges' concerns, I would note there's 750 homes in, in Serene Lakes, and most of them are on maybe quarter-acre parcels. This is actually much, much bigger. But, yeah, so I appreciate their input. I think this is the only negative comments we've, we've heard, and I think that, that says something, but we want to be good neighbors. I would also note that our parcel, prior to us acquiring it in 2014, was part of this larger Royal Gorge property, so the public had access to this parking lot and our parcel. So they were crossing right behind Mr. Bridges and Bill's house. Now, we're proposing, and I guess that's the grand thing, and I'll, I'll stop talking. The overall impact of what we're proposing is that potentially in the future, we could build or, and actually, I'll take a step back. We've contemplated donating this to the land trust that owns all that, or having them acquire it, purchase it, and then it would be a parking and, you know, part like it originally was. We can't do that as it is now because it's all part of one lot, lot nine of the subdivision. If we said tomorrow, which I'm not saying we're going to do, but we have had discussions with land trust, if we wanted to donate those and make it as it used to be, we can't because right now it's lot, it's all one lot. So it makes sense to me from every standpoint. I do appreciate their concerns, we want to be good neighbors. But just reiterate, we're not proposing anything, nothing's changing. However you decide today, tomorrow, we, that will be a parking lot. And I think the big point that's been brought up too is parcel A, the exist, the use that's been going on lately. And Roland could give more background, but we're not gaining anything by that use. The operator of all this snow plow equipment that serves the lake, I mean, the, a community there also does all the timber and fire mitigation, asked if they could use that to store their snow plow equipment and their wood when they chip it and do fire mitigation. So we said yes. So it, what's been going on there has nothing to do with us. I'm not saying it's improper or out of, you know, use of the zoning, but we can solve that tomorrow if, and, and I'd love to, I wish we would have heard, I guess, before from the concerns. But that's a existing paved parking lot that the snowplow company for the area is kind of staging. And, and another thing, and I think Stacy maybe clarified it, this is zoned resort, ours. The other 749 homes in this area are residential, ours is zoned resort. Now, what we're proposing here, like I said, we've reduced the, the use by a hundredfold from a bar, restaurant, hotel. So ultimately, there could be one other home built on parcel 2B. We would have to go through all the building process to do that. And, yeah, so I'm happy to answer any questions. I could go through Mr. Bridges' letter and.
No, we'll, we'll. We'll go to questions.
Okay, sorry.
We'll go to questions. Commissioner Johnson?
You know, me, parcel 2A is kind of.
Your mic's not on.
Sorry about that. To me, parcel 2A is kind of a non-issue, but at any rate, what, it sounded like you have some plans for parcel 2A?
No particular plans. I mean, we'd have to kind of get together with all the owners, but I mean.
There's, there's a parking lot there now.
There's a parking lot, yeah, so I think it would continue. I mean, I think originally when we started this process, we had hoped to divide, you know, both of those, 2A and 2B, and possibly build a home or a smaller ADU on 2A. And but feedback from the county, and I think Andy mentioned it, what it doesn't show there is half of that yellow 2A is actually in the water. We own into the, the creek there. So there is, I would say, without any variances, there might be a 10 by 15-foot building envelope. But yeah, so that's why we ended up just combining it. Now, the lot number 11 is going to be both of those, just because based on input from the county, it didn't make sense to try and make both of those a separate lot because of the limitations on 2A. And Andy can speak to that.
Okay, well.
Do you want Mr. Casano to answer that?
I guess, I guess what I'm wondering, it's a parking lot now.
Well, it's, it's going to be part of that single-family lot now, so what is done with it would be up to the owner of the property, so they might leave it alone, but it's not, it's been a private piece of ground forever. So what's happened there might have been stuff that the owners didn't apply, didn't approve of, or people parked there, but it's private property.
And so anything that happens in that lot is going to have to be consistent with the zoning code?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Any commissioners, any more questions for Mr. Casano? Commissioner Beckler?
No.
No?
We appreciate all your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, Stacy, did you have anything to add before we go to deliberations? Okay, great. I'm going to bring it back to the commission, and any commissioner want to start with the deliberations? Anything? Anybody?
Sure.
Commissioner Ronteen?
Uh.
Well, those are questions.
Fortunately, I am very familiar with the area. I built a place in 2000, right when the, the new lodge was built, and I got to enjoy the fruits of. I built a place in 2000, right when the new lodge was built, and I got to enjoy the fruits of that bar, restaurant, et cetera, way back in the day. I sold my place in '07 there, so it's been quite a while. But I am somewhat familiar. I just don't see any issue here. You know, you look at 26 hotel units and a restaurant, bar, and you're going to reduce, or you already have reduced to four units plus a residence. You're lowering your traffic counts and off-street parking. And I get... I remembered that parking lot, the overflow parking, which did get used back in the day. Once, if in the event they decided to build a residence on 2B, and they want to put a off-site garage or toy storage, or whatever it might be, across the street, that's up to them as a private owner, private property. A lot of people walk across the street to get to their garage or off-site use for whatever reason. So I don't see... That's up to the owner. They own that property. So I'm in support of what they are proposing. It just seems like best use, and it's going to clean that up, get that road paved a little bit farther down Sort of Springs Road, and it's up to them if they want to... I don't know if you guys are familiar with that area, but the snowfall there is phenomenal. It's two to three times in my mind what Truckee is on average. It just has a phenomenon there over that lake. So every property there has adequate, adequate snow storage, excessive snow storage. And then I won't go into all the requirements for snow weight on your roof and all that kind of stuff, the engineering. Anyway, those are my quick comments, and I am in support of it.
I just have one quick question for Chris. Did I accidentally push the panic button with the gentleman in the back?
No, you did not.
Okay, thank you. I did not. Okay, awesome, thank you. I was a little concerned. Any other commissioners have any other comments? Okay.
I just have a couple of comments. I... It seems, you know, at least after hearing the Q and A and clarifications, I appreciate the neighbors that live there, and, you know, sometimes even though I know there's notification, like you're busy, it's hard to, you know, take the time to do it. It does seem like everything has been addressed from the project perspective and having clarity around the lots. I made a simple diagram of, you know, lots nine is this parcel, lot 11 is these two. So that makes sense, and it sounds like it meets all the requirements from a zoning perspective and that if the owner of parcel 2A and 2B decides to move forward building, they would also have to follow all of the requirements from the county. So to me, I feel like all the open questions I had have been resolved through the deliberation and Q and A. So I would support it at this point.
Council Cook, should we take these individually?
Yes, if you're ready for a motion, these should be individual, and I'll need to read each of these in because there was an edit to the condition of approval.
Okay. Do we want... Which one?
So the edit to the conditions of approval would apply to items two, three... Two and three.
Okay.
So if you're ready, I can read in the first item, and somebody can offer to make a motion on it.
Please.
First item is adopt the mitigated negative declaration, State Clearinghouse Number 2024-080-440, and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan prepared pursuant to Section 15070 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 18.16.010 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, supported by the findings in the staff report.
Can I get a first?
I move we adopt.
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Runtine?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Alves?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Yes.
The next item is approve the tentative parcel map for the subdivision of the existing Ice Lakes Lodge building into four separate condominium units and one parcel, and create one new single-family residential lot as identified on the tentative map, subject to the conditions of approval as modified and supported by the findings in the staff report.
Can I get a first?
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
First and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Runtine?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Alves?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Yes.
The third is approve the conditional use permit to allow for the application of the Plan Residential Development Ordinance to subdivide the existing Ice Lakes Lodge building into four separate condominium units, subject to the conditions of approval as modified and supported by the findings in the staff report.
Move to adopt.
Can I get a second?
I will second that, thank you.
First and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Runtine?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Alves?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Yes.
No more? That's it?
That is it.
The neck... The decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. That would be Mr. Bridges. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $752. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda for public hearing is on the Mill Creek Recirculated Draft Environmental Impact Report. To receive comments, to reiterate, there will be no action on the project at this hearing on this item. The purpose is just to receive comments on the draft environmental document. The staff for this item will be presented by Kara Conklin, Senior Planner. Is Kara here? There she is. Kara, you're up.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dahlgren. Good morning, commissioners. Kara Conklin with the Planning Services Division. The item before you this morning is the Mill Creek Project Recirculated Draft Environmental Impact Report Public Hearing. So today's meeting is... It's not going to have any recommendation or action from you. It's just to take your comments on the environmental document and any public comments today. Just to note, we do have Angela DeRosa with Rainy Planning and Management from our environmental consultant, should you have any questions. And I'm also available for questions. There we go. All right. So the purpose of today's meeting, SEQA guidelines encourages the lead agency to hold a public meeting on all environmental documents. Placer County's policy is that the Planning Commission oversee public meetings for environmental documents. And so that is what we are doing today. Today's purpose again is just to solicit comments on the adequacy of the recirculated environmental impact report, or I'm sorry, draft environmental impact report, and is not an opportunity to discuss the merits of the project. Just a little background, I think Commissioner Johnson, you're the only one who maybe was here and heard of this project. Prior to, back in 2018, it did come before the Planning Commission as a draft EIR project. However, the project was withdrawn and the EIR was never certified. And in the cases now, since the project has somewhat changed and some of the SEQA guidelines have changed, the applicant has done a recirculated draft environmental document. So we did publicly notice, the notice of availability of the RDEIR. We notified property owners within 300 feet of the project site, and that amounted to about 44 property owners. Anyone who commented on the notice of preparation, at that time it was 25 commenters. We also have the RDEIR at our Placer County Public Libraries, the Community Development Resource Agency and Clerk's Offices. We notified state and federal agencies and tribes, public agencies, including local school districts, county departments, the West Placer Municipal Advisory Council, and we also noticed in the Sacramento Bee newspaper. So the project site is located in the Southern Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan area. Just on the south is Sacramento County, so it borders the Placer County-Sacramento County line. It is bound by PFE Road on the north here, Cook-Riolo Road on the western boundary, and then Antelope Road on the eastern boundary. And over to your right is the City of Roseville Sphere of Influence area. The project site comprises four parcels for a total of 65.2 acres. And a portion of it, the western portion, is zoned residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining a minimum building site of 20,000 square feet. Whoops. And on the right portion... I'm sorry, the western... The eastern portion, I'm sorry, is zoned industrial park combining design scenic corridor. Need to go back. And just so, you know, so the existing site does have a commercial nursery on it. There is an abandoned almond orchard that is just north of that, so it's kind of in this area here. And then on the west is just kind of grassland area. There is a swale that goes through the grassland up here from the southern to the northern portion. I would also like to note, it didn't freeze on me, this corner parcel up here on the corner of PFE and Antelope was recently rezoned to the RM30 district through the Housing Needs Rezone Project. So that site is identified as high-density residential RM30. And so on the left is the existing community plan designations. Forty-eight point six acres of the project site are designated as low-density residential, and 16.6 acres of the site is designated as industrial. And as previously stated, the existing zoning is currently residential, single-family, combining agriculture with a minimum building site of 20,000 square feet, and industrial park combining a designed scenic corridor. These are just some images of the project site as it currently exists today. And so the proposed project, so the Mill Creek Project is proposing 322 single-family residences and would partially satisfy their affordable housing requirement by including 33 accessory dwelling units on site. The project would have two gated entry points, one entry here off of PFE Road on the northern portion of the site, and then on the east at Antelope Road. These would be gated entry points, and the project does include five acres of parks with an open spa... Or I'm sorry, a trail passeo along here from the PFE Road entrance. We have a 2.2-acre park, three, that the passeo leads to, a 1.8-acre park at the Antelope Road entry, and then another five-acre park, which is located in the southwest corner of the project site. Lot sizes would range from 4,000 square feet and go up to a little over 6,000 square feet. And so this is also a current... I actually need to correct myself. Lot sizes would be from 3,000 square feet and go up to 6,000. I'm sorry about that. Okay, that doesn't make sense. So going back here to the site plan, as you can see, the project will be broken up into three separate phases. So on the western portion of the site would be Phase One, and then Phase Two would include that Antelope entry, and Phase Three in the southern portion of the project site. So the project would be requesting some entitlements, including an amendment to the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan Land Use Designation from low-density residential, which is one to two dwelling units per acre, and industrial, to medium-density residential and high-density residential. The project would propose to rezone the project site from its current zoning to residential, single-family, combining a minimum building site of 4,000 square feet, and that would be for a total of 46.4 acres, and residential, single-family, combining a minimum building site of 3,000 square feet, and that would be for a total of 18.8 acres. The entitlements would also include a large lot tentative subdivision map, a vesting phase small lot tentative subdivision map, and a variance to exceed the 10-foot height limit for fence and retaining wall combinations along portions of the site that include the northern, western, and eastern boundaries. The timeline of the environmental process is that a notice of preparation to prepare an environmental document was published on April 12, 2024. The NOP public comment period went from April 12 to May 11, 2024. We held a public scoping meeting on April 24, 2024, and the recirculated draft EIR was released for public review and comment on February 20, and that comment period is for 45 days and lasts until April 7 of 2025. So the... These are the impacts that were analyzed within the draft EIR, and the highlighted impacts, or I'm sorry, resource areas are the ones that were identified as being less than significant with mitigation measures or are significant and unavoidable. So the resource areas that were found to be less than significant were energy, land use planning, population and housing, public services and recreation, utilities and service systems, and wildfire. The resource areas that were identified that could be less than significant with the implementation with mitigation are listed on the next couple of slides. I want you to kind of bear with because I'm going to go over what those mitigation measures entail. For aesthetics, impact 4-4, which is to create a new source of substantial light or glare, that is identified as an impact that could be reduced to less than significant by the applicant submitting a lighting plan for the project that demonstrates compliance with the Dark Sky Association and that the plan is Dark Sky compliant, and that plan will be required to be submitted to the county for review and approval. Air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, impact 6-1, conflict with or obstruct implementation of applicable air quality plan during project construction. And so mitigation measure 6.1 will require that the applicant provide proof to the Placer County Air Pollution Control District that it demonstrates that its heavy-duty off-road construction vehicles, which are greater than 50 horsepower, shall receive project-wide fleet average of 20% NOX and 45 DPN reduction as compared to carb statewide fleet average emissions. So the applicant will have to provide that to the Air Pollution Control District prior to construction activities. Biological resources, so I've got four slides on this, and partially... The next slide will show it, but the project is actually partially within the Placer County Conservation Program and partially outside of the Placer County Conservation Program. So biological resource mitigation measures will cover PCCP activities, and then it will also cover the areas that are outside of PCCP. So as stated, 37.9 acres, which is the western portion of the project site, is subject to the PCCP and the County Aquatic Resources Program. So those mitigation measures include PCCP general conditions 1, 3, and 5, which include obtaining coverage under the general permit for discharges of stormwater associated with construction activity. It's basically the general construction permit. The applicant will also be required to apply for and be issued coverage under the Placer County Conservation Program. They'll need to pay land conversion fees to convert natural land cover. They'll also be required to conduct worker environmental training to educate on covered species and their habitats avoidance and the legal implications of violating any of those laws. They will be required to implement PCCP species conditions 1, 3, and 4. Those require planning-level surveys prior to construction and no more than 15 days prior to construction for Swainson's hawk and burrowing owls and the tri-colored blackbird. The applicant will be required to implement mitigation avoidance and minimization measures. They'll also be required to implement PCCP community condition two point two, where the applicant will need to coordinate with the Placer Conservation Authority to, to determine which in-stream and stream system best management practices shall apply to the project. And this will be prior to them receiving their land conversion authorization. Um, they may also have to pay mitigation fees uh, for any impacts to special habitats. So this is the image showing where the, the PCCP area would be covered and then the non- PCCP area, which is on the eastern side. The applicant will also be required to um, comply with PCCP carp conditions um, one through twenty-three. And they will need to apply for a letter of permission from the US Army Corps of Engineers. They'll also need to submit an application to the Regional Water Quality Control Board for Water Quality Service uh, certification. And they should also apply for a lake bed stream alteration agreement from CDFW. Um, this applies, these mitigation measures apply to the entire site, so both PCCP and non-PCCP areas. Um, they will be required to conduct a new round of special status plant surveys if construction hasn't commenced prior to spring of twenty twenty-seven. And will need to apply mitigation avoidance and minimization measures. Mitigation measure seven two A um, requires that ground disturbing activities should take place between September one and March thirty-first to avoid any impacts to special status bumblebees. Um, if construction does take place out of there, they will need to um, do pre-construction surveys and um, avoid, apply um, avoidance and minimization measures. Mitigation measure seven dash two B requires that the applicant conduct comprehensive velv surveys, so velvet is um, valley elderberry longhorn beetle. So there are some elderberry bushes that are located off, onsite. Um, so they will need to uh, do those comprehensive velv surveys and implement any mitigation avoidance or minimization measures. Was determined that the elderberry shrubs onsite um, did not have any active um, longhorn beetles in the bushes, so um, they are required to do surveys just to ensure that that is still the case prior to construction. For the non-PCCP area, again, more special status species pre-construction surveys for the burrowing owl, Swainson's hawk, and nesting birds will be required. Um, there will be a habitat assessment that needs to happen for roosting bats. And the applicant will also uh, be required to purchase six point one acres of Swainson's Hawk foraging habitat elsewhere within Placer County to mitigate for the loss of the onsite habitat. So the applicant is currently looking into where that will be um, located. Uh, the applicant will need to apply for a section four oh four permit if waters of the US will be impacted and apply for a section four oh one water quality certification if waters of the state will be impacted. They'll need to apply for a section sixteen hundred lake and stream bed alteration agreement. And they'll need to also apply for a Placer County tree permit to mitigate for any loss of protected trees onsite that are outside of the PCCP area. For cultural resource impacts, impact eight dash two, cause a substantial change in the significance of a unique archaeological, archaeological resource. Mitigation measure eight dash two requires that the applicant stop all construction activities within one hundred feet of the find should any sort of resource be discovered. Um, a qualified archaeologist would need to be retained and notified and um, mitigation eight dash two B requires that a qualified archaeologist conduct worker awareness training for all construction workers to explain the importance of and the legal basis for the protection of these archaeological resources that potentially could be onsite. Impact eight dash three, disturb any human remains. So this requires that should any human remains be encountered, that all work uh, within one hundred feet sees and Placer County coroner be notified. Impact eight point four, potential to cause physical change which would affect unique ethnic cultural values or restrict existing religious or sacred uses. Mitigation measure eight dash four requires a note on the improvement plans that should any suspected tribal cultural resources be discovered on the site, that all work shall seize and a tribal representative, as well as the Community Development Resource Agency should be notified immediately. Geology and soils, impact ten dash two would result in substantial soil erosions or the loss of topsoil. Mitigation measures ten dash two A, two B, and ten dash two, two C would require that the applicant submit a WD ID number from the state regional water, water quality control boards, storm water multiple application and reports tracking system, whoo, that's a mouthful, smarts. Um, the applicant is required to prepare and submit improvement plans, specifications, and cost estimates for review and approval. And shall show any and all approved, proposed grading, drainage improvements, vegetation and tree removal on those plans. And that they be, be required to conform to the county grading ordinance and storm water quality ordinance. Impact ten dash three, on or off-site landslide, lateral spreading, subsidence, liquefaction, or collapse. Mitigation measure ten dash three requires implementations of mitigation measures ten point, ten dash two B and ten dash two C. And then mitigation measure ten dash three B requires the submittal of a final geotechnical engineering report to be submitted and requires the applicant to submit a soils investigation for each lot. Impact ten dash four, directly or indirectly destroy a unique paleontological, paleontological or geologic feature. Mitigation measure ten dash four A requires that the applicant retain a qualified paleontologist to prepare a worker environmental awareness plan, otherwise known as WEP. And that should be uh, presented to all construction personnel. Mitigation measure ten dash four B requires that all work must be halted and the Community Development Resource Agency should be noted if any paleontological resources are found during construction. Hazards and hazardous materials. Impact eleven dash two, create a significant hazard to the public or environmental, or environment involving a likely release of hazardous materials on, to the environment. Mitigation measure eleven dash two A would require that the applicant hire a licensed well contractor to obtain a well abandonment permit from the Placer County Environmental Health Department. Mitigation measure eleven two B requires that the applicant provide an onsite assessment that determines whether any structures that are proposed to be demolished um, contain any lead-based paint or asbestos. Mitigation measure eleven two C applies only to the Marquez Valencia property um, that prior to the demolition of the single-family residence, that the applicant um, shall comply with the soil characterization work plan that has been prepared for that property. Mitigation measure eleven two D, if indicators of soil contamination are encountered at the project site, the area should be isolated and soil samples be obtained and excavated from the site. Mitigation measure eleven two E requires that PG&E and the Engineering and Surveying Division meet onsite prior to the commencement of grading and construction um, to prepare any safety guidelines for construction out there. Hydrology and water quality, impact twelve dash one, violate water quality standards or create runoff that degrade surface or groundwater quality during construction. And mitigation measure twelve dash one requires implementation of mitigation measures ten dash two A, B, and C. Impact twelve dash two, violate water quality standards or create runoff that degrade surface or groundwater quality during operations. So mitigation measure twelve dash two A requires that the improvement plan show those water quality treatment facilities on the project site as well as best management practices. Mitigation measure twelve dash two B requires that the improvement plans show the message details, placement, and locations of all storm drain inlets and that they show the signage saying um, prohibitive language such as no dumping flows to creek. Mitigation measure twelve dash two C requires that the project implement uh, permanent and operational source control measures that are designed for pollutant generating activities and that they must implement low impact development standards that are designed to reduce runoff, treat the storm water, and provide baseline hydro modification management. Mitigation measure twelve dash two D requires the submittal of a final storm water quality plan and identifies how the project will meet the phase two MS four permit obligations. And mitigation measure twelve two E requires the implementation of mitigation measure twelve, uh, tend to be. Impact twelve dash three, substantially alter the existing drainage patterns of the site or area. So uh, mitigation measures include a final drainage report be submitted to the county, requires a one-time payment of drainage improvement and flood control fees, and then a annual payment of drainage improvement and flood control fees. Um, because the project is required to be a participant of the Dry Creek Watershed County Service Area. And impact twelve dash four, place housing within a hundred-year flood hazard area, impede or redirect flood flows or expose people or structures to a significant risk of loss, injury, or death involving flooding. Mitigation measure twelve dash four requires that that final drainage report demonstrate that the proposed projects will not in, increase the limits or water surface elevation of the site. Um, or I'm sorry, of the off-site one hundred-year flood plain which is downstream of the project site. Noise, impact fourteen dash one, a substantial temporary or periodic increase in ambient noise levels in the project vicinity above levels existing without the project. So um, the noise study identified that um, some of the construction components would exceed the noise um, requirements. So um, mitigation fourteen dash one requires that um, certain criteria be included on the improvement plans, um, that it should, the noise, construction noise should be within the Placer County noise ordinance, the hours that are exempted. Um, all mobile or fixed noise-producing equipment should apply, should comply with federal, state, and local regulations. Electric acute, equipment shall be used instead of pneumatic or internal combustion equipment. Stockpiles, staging, parking, and maintenance areas shall be located as far as practicable from sensitive receptors. Sensitive receptors are, are typically um, single-family residences. Construction site access road speeds shall be established and enforced. And that nearby residences shall be notified of construction commencing. Unnecessary idling of internal combustion engines are prohibited. And any internal combustion equipment shall be properly muffed and maintained. Stationary equipment such as generators must be located as far as practicable from sensitive receptors. And that a six-foot-tall temporary construction sound wall shall be constructed along the eastern, northern, and southern sides of the project site um, during construction work. And for off-site roadway construction, a six-foot-tall temporary construction sound barrier shall be placed around any concrete saw. Transportation. Impact seventeen dash one, conflict with a program, plan, policy, or ordinance addressing the circulation system during construction activities. Mitigation measure seventeen dash one would require the improvement plans to include, include a striping and signing plan that will include all on and off-site traffic control devices. Um, and also a construction signing and traffic control plan should be consented, um, submitted to the Engineering and Surveying Division for review and approval. Tribal cultural resources, impact eighteen dash one, cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a tribal cultural resource, which would require the implementation of the previous mitigation measures eight dash two A, eight dash two B, and eight dash four. So there were two impacts in this project that were identified as being significant and avoidable even with the implementation of recommended mitigation measures. And those impacts are impact five dash one, converting prime farmland, unique farmland or farmland, farmland of statewide importance to a non-agricultural use. And impact five dash four, changes in existing environment could cumulatively result in a loss of farmland to non-agricultural use. So a portion of the non-PCCP covered area was identified as um, farmland of um, I think it was unique farmland. Oh, I'll have to double-check on that, I'm sorry. Um, but the applicant is also looking into purchasing the, the acreage that was um, identified as the unique farmland as um, into a mitigation bank. So that is a requirement of them to purchase like farmland somewhere else in the county to mitigate for the loss of the farmland on this current site. So I won't read through all of the project objectives, but the project does have um, twelve project objectives and that is required by SEQA that um, that the project have objectives and that the alternatives and the project um, try to meet those objectives. Um, some of these objectives include um, creating a high-quality neighborhood environment that contains a mix of residential and recreational uses. Um, reducing growth pressures um, in outlying areas of the county by efficient, efficiently utilizing the project site to accommodate residential growth and development. Um, providing a planned infrastructure system with all public facilities and services that are necessary to meet the needs of development of the project site. As well as providing for a cohesive plan of development that maximizes internal and external connectivity within the project site for pedestrian and bicycle travel, as well as providing a sufficient number of residential units within the project site to support necessary improvements to local, regional, and public services facilities. Um, SEQA guidelines also require that an EIR analyze a reasonable range of feasible alternatives that would meet most or all of the project objectives while trying to reduce the magnitude or avoiding one or more of the environmental um, effects of the proposed project. The project did evaluate three alternatives. They all, they evaluated the no project, no build alternative, the build-out pursuant to existing community plan alternative, and a reduced density alternative. Alternative B, which is the existing community plan alternative. Um, so as stated, the, the existing land use is low-density residential with the eastern portion of the site um, zoned as industrial. So this alternative would consist of development of forty-eight point six acres of low-density residential, looking at two dwelling units per acre, which would amount to ninety-seven single-family units with an additional um, ten eighty use. And the industrial portion of the project site would be developed with sixteen point six acres and two, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight square feet of industrial uses. Alternative C, the reduced density alternative would consist of um, the site being converted to medium-density residential at about three dwelling units per acre. And um, it would consist of the development of fifty-one point eight acres of medium-density residential for a hundred and fifty-five single-family units with sixteen eighty use. Um, twenty percent of the acreage is reduced for onsite streets and there is an onsite um, required one-hundred-foot open space buffer, um, which is adjacent to, is required adjacent to an industrial use. Um, as you can see, the existing um, parcels across the way are industrial. We have the Creekview Residential Project across the way at medium-density residential. Oops, and the high-density residential in the northern portion. So this chart here shows a comparison of the alternatives as proposed to the project site. Obviously, the no project, no build alternative would be considered the environmentally superior alternative since. since nothing, the site would remain as-is. However, the no-project-no-build alternative wouldn't achieve any of the project's objectives. The build-out pursuant to the existing community plan alternative results in three greater impacts. Look, I'll direct you to the bottom here. It results in three greater impacts than the proposed project. And the reduced-density alternative has been determined to be the environmentally superior alternative as it would result in two fewer impacts and no greater impacts than the proposed project. So with that, I want to give the opportunities for public input. So there is opportunity today at the Planning Commission meeting for comments on the recirculated draft EIR project. It is a 45-day public review period, and it ends at 5:00 PM on April 7, 2025. Any person who submits a written or oral comment on the recirculated draft EIR will receive a formal response to their comments in the final EIR. We will have another meeting at the West Placer MAC, and that will come probably late spring after the public comment period has closed. We do anticipate coming back before your commission for a recommendation sometime in summer. And then we anticipate going to the Board of Supervisors for a final decision on the project sometime late summer or fall. And comment submission. So if folks would like to submit their comments in writing by April 7, they can mail it to our Environmental Coordination Services located at 3091 County Center Drive, Suite 190 in Auburn, California 95603. You can also submit written comments to cedraecs@placer.ca.gov. And I've also provided the website. We do have a whole project page on our Placer County website for the Mill Creek project, and the draft EIR is also located there. And with that, I will leave that up on the screen. I'm available to answer any questions as well as our consultant. We also have staff here from Engineering and Surveying. Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. I'll take it back to the commission. Do any of the commissioners, I'll start down here on the right, have any questions for Kara?
Okay, yeah, just a little confusion on my part. What's the distinction between the stuff in the PCCP and the stuff that's out of the PCCP?
You're asking why it's broken up that way?
Well, some of it's not in it, and so I'm wondering why it's not.
Sure. So the reason why it's not, I'll go back to the slide to show you. So a portion of the site is located, so the western portion is located in PCCP Plan Area A. And then the other portion is located in PCCP Plan Area B, which is basically all of the non-participating cities. So City of Roseville, that area is within the City of Roseville sphere of influence, and that is why it is not mapped within the PCCP because it's a non-participating jurisdiction.
Okay, so it's in the zone of influence then for the City of Roseville, is that why?
Correct. So even though the project site itself is within unincorporated Placer County, it's located in the sphere of influence, and therefore it's not mapped through PCCP.
Okay, thank you.
Kara, just one question. The, can you clarify for the farmland? So how it works today, if there is a farmland impact from a SEQA perspective, then the applicant has to secure that like farmland? So it's kind of like the Swanson Hawk Habitat in the non-PCCP area? Can you just clarify how that works? I don't know. I'm not aware, yeah.
Yeah, so the way that the farmland has been addressed with PCCP is that the applicant would obviously pay the land conversion fees, and that would be a type of mitigation for the loss of farmland. But because this is outside of PCCP, yes, it would be, basically, there's no way to mitigate for a loss of farmland. So basically, purchasing like-for-like in an area of Placer County that can be utilized as farmland. So they would have to purchase the exact amount of acreage comparable to the loss of farmland.
Okay, it just doesn't, it doesn't go through the PCCP? They'd have to do it separately, like the old way of doing it, basically, the prior way of doing it?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Is the farmland currently being farmed? Is there any active farming going?
There's no active farm, farmland on the site. There was an existing almond orchard in the past, but it's not actively being farmed. There is an active nursery onsite in the southern portion that is existing.
Okay. And then you mentioned one residence that would need to get demoed, I guess? The Marquez Valencia, is that on, one single residence onsite?
So there are several, there are several structures that need to get demolished, but the structure on the Marquez Valencia property, that's the one that they will need to ensure that there's no asbestos or hazardous materials.
I see. And that, were those purchased by the applicant or the developer? Or were they eminent domain issues?
That's a great question. I think they are still owned by the owners, but I, I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I'll give the applicant a chance. Is Mr. Cook representing the applicant? Are you representing the applicant? Come on up.
Good afternoon. Dave Cook on behalf of the applicant. The answer to your question on the farmland and on the homes, that property now has been purchased. And to Kara's point, there are a number of structures that need to be demolished on the old nursery. That's the only one where there's some subsequent cleanup. To clarify on the active farmland, it actually, I think it's characterized as unique farmland, and it is comprised solely of the old nursery known as the HAIGHT nursery. And so that needs to be mitigated, and we're exploring those options in terms of wetland mitigation banks, Swanson Hawk Habitat is being similar and providing for that. And if I could, one other clarification, and it's confusing. But at the beginning, Kara mentioned on the lot sizes, that the 3,000 was the minimum lot size. That's actually accurate from a standpoint of the zone district that we have established at the RS3. But we're doing that only because a couple of interior corners don't meet the minimum standard. Otherwise, our smallest lot, I think, is 4,200 square feet. So it's a little bit of a misnomer, not a big deal, but I wanted to clarify it because I think the perception of a 3,000-square-foot lot is slightly different than that of a 4,000-foot lot.
Any questions for Mr. Cook from the commission? Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hey, now I'm going to open it up for public comment. If there's anybody here in the room that would like to speak on this item, please come up to the microphone and state your name. Ms. Bullard, are you coming up? There you go.
Again, Laura Bullard, longtime Placer County resident. You know, this is the perfect example, or whatever, of a disgusting disregard for our community plan, okay? One of the things our community plan says that adherence to the goals and policy of the community design element of the plan will play a major part in creating attractive and functional neighborhoods within the district, okay? Another thing that, on page 33 of our community plan, it says that the ultimate population, when they calculated, this was of the entire area was supposed to be 15,000 people or whatever. They've kind of gone beyond that right now. On page 35, there's actually a table that shows the calculations of the various areas. And on page 41, it says it must be recognized that the maximum density permitted by the zoning is not likely to be achieved due to various goals and policies of the plan relating to open space, minimum lot size, and setbacks, et cetera. But that just keeps getting crushed because you guys just keep ignoring that, okay? One of the things that you want to do in this plan, or whatever they want to do in this plan, is to rezone things and to take the population to five times, five times what the population of that area was supposed to be. You cannot tell me that that's not going to have an impact on our area. The, it's going to take it from basically 65 to 322 homes, which is going to be a significant impact to traffic, et cetera. Also allow, ask for the mounding issue that I brought to you guys before about building those cute little mounds or whatever right next to one of the properties. They want to exceed the 10-foot limit, okay? And that obviously impacts the surrounding, you know, properties. Another thing is, I'm looking through my notes really quickly, the loss of farmland, okay? One of the things that has been talked about is the idea that, oh, you really can't farm on like an acre or something like that. You know what? I looked at Placer County's statistics, and 48% of the farms or whatever in Placer County are one to nine acres, okay? In the state of California, over 25% actually are less than one acre. So you can do hobby farming in that, on those small parcels. Again, traffic flows are going to be significantly impacted. The idea of, you know, again, let's use the community plan or even the alternative one, which is the less density. And the, I'm just going to kind of leave it there. I've got my mishmash of different things. But this is a significant, significant violation of our community plan and impacts the entire area from traffic and everything else. And this is just, you guys are decimating, or this goes through, are decimating our county. We need to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Else, do we have anybody online? We're going to go to online.
Harry, are you able to unmute your mic and give your comments?
Yes, thank you. Yes, hi. Harry White, Sierra Club, Placer Group. Regarding the adequacy of the RDEIR, we believe the Mill Creek project can be significantly improved by incorporating native plants throughout the development. This would be consistent with Placer County and Dry Creek requirements for use of native plants and also help mitigate the huge loss of native flora and fauna which is occurring throughout Placer County. Populations of insects, birds, and animals are crashing both worldwide and in our area as habitats are converted from natural vegetation to human use. Agriculture can leave some important room for native plants and animals as has been well attested by Dry Creek residents who have described how their community used to have hawks, eagles, owls, and many bird species. But with the onslaught of development in West Placer, there are now many heartbreaking stories of how ripping out trees and paving over farmland and open space have meant the end of beneficial animal populations. The ranch and Mill Creek developments could be more nails in the coffin in the death of West Placer ecology, but it doesn't have to be this way. We can mitigate the problem by building some habitat into the projects themselves. Use of native plants throughout the ranch and Mill Creek developments will provide a desirable feature which benefits the developers and residents both, providing attractive pollinator gardens that people enjoy and is mitigation for environmental degradation. Locally, native plants are the foundation of our ecosystem and the food chain. Extensive use of native plants is in keeping with Goal 6D of the Placer County Conservation Plan, in particular, see Policy 6D10. Also, the requirements of Dry Creek-West Placer Community Plan, Policy 13 and 14. This is not rocket science. What we're talking about here is landscaping, landscaping. An appropriate plant palette for use as an environmental mitigation is not hard to implement. In addition to low-water usage and benefits to nature, native plants can add visual interest and provide a welcome visual change from the same old boring, commercial plantings. Resources for selecting an appropriate plant palette are available through California Native Plant Society, Audubon Zirksy Society, and other resources. Also, the Placer Resource Conservation District, PRCD, could provide the county and developers with an internal resource for successfully selecting, planting, and maintaining native plants as they have extensive experience and knowledge. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else online, Kelsey?
I see no others.
All right. If there are no other public comments at this time, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to staff or commission, if you have any questions. Commissioner Watts?
Not a question, just a statement. I was able to speak with the applicant because he was able to pierce the email system that keeps me being unavailable.
Same here. I received a request from Mr. Cook to discuss, and he gave me a brief presentation yesterday.
And I was able to tour the property several years ago when this project first came up with the developer, Mr. Cook, and I declared that at that time. Anything else?
I just had a couple of comments. I would also disclose, I did meet with Dave. He gave me an overview. I had a couple of questions to staff on the PCCP area, so I appreciate why that notch is in there. The, just a couple of things that I would say that might be helpful as this moves forward is helping the public understand the VMT differences between the current use, especially when it's industrial compared to residential, because it actually, I'm not advocating one way or another, but it can be very significant if the industrial use was to be built out. So I think that might be a helpful measure just to evaluate. And then based on the commenter via Zoom, native plants, I think that is an important point. I believe most developments typically have California native plant requirement. Most of the time, though, it's like a head nod, and you get a couple native plants, not much. I would encourage Dave Cook and the developer to do more of that. I know Dave has done projects in Granite Bay, and he's tried to accommodate and acknowledge that. So I would encourage them to do that. Thank you.
So if commissioners have no other questions, and Kara, you have no other comments at this time? Okay, great. I'm going to adjourn till 1:30 for our next item on the agenda.
Okay. I'm going to reconvene the meeting. Welcome back, everyone. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider amendments to the Placer County Housing Element 2021 through 2029. The Board of Supervisors is the final decision body for this item today. The Planning Commission will be making recommendations on this item to the Board of Supervisors. The staff presentation will be provided by Callie Kettenger Cecil, supervising planner.
Before we get to staff's presentation, I did just want to address one thing because it came up in comments and I feel like it's something that's worth talking about before the item starts. I think the commission may have seen it, but there were a couple of comments that came in that raised concerns about potential conflicts of interest, specifically conflicts of interest with Mr. Puhuli. The comments raised concerns about the activities of his spouse, who is employed at D.R. Horton, which is a home builder company, and also holds an uncompensated volunteer position with the North State Building Industry Association as an executive committee member. I wanted to state that our office looked into the issue of conflict of interest and believed there is no conflict of interest that prevents Mr. Puhuli from participating in this item, the housing element item, or that would warrant continuance to this item. In specific, neither D.R. Horton or the Building Industry Association is an applicant in this proceeding. They're not named parties in the housing element, and no decision by the Planning Commission or Board on this item would result in any change in Mr. Puhuli's spouse's compensation, nor would it significantly alter either organization's revenues or expenses. In addition, I haven't have not identified that either organization has a real party ownership interest in any of the properties identified in the housing element, including the Hope Way project in Penrin that's proposed on a site identified in the housing element. I also want to mention that this is something that our office, the Community Development Resource Agency, and Mr. Puhuli have been monitoring since the start of his employment, and it's something that we will continue to evaluate if and when projects come forward in the future. I don't know if the commission has any questions on that topic, but did want to make that statement before we start with staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Go ahead, Callie.
Hello, Commissioners and Chair Dahlgren. My name is Callie Kettenger Cecil, supervising planner with the Planning Services Division. Today, I am before you to present an amendment to the housing element. The housing element is part of the general plan and is an analysis of housing needs for the eight-year housing cycle. This cycle began in 2021 and ends in 2029. The housing element considers community context and outreach, legal requirements and general plan consistency, housing stock, demographics, and needs, constraints to housing resources, an inventory of existing housing resources, as well as goals, policies, and programs to implement the housing element. The current housing element was adopted and certified by the Board of Supervisors in May 2021. Included with the housing element was Program HE1, Rezone to Meet the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. The regional housing needs allocation is abbreviated to RHNA, commonly referred to as RENA, and I will refer to that standard as RENA throughout my presentation. Program HE1 was designed to address a shortfall of 1,107 lower-income units, and through the Rezone program that I will be discussing in just a moment, that shortfall was adjusted to 1,219 lower-income units as a result of changes that had to occurred to anticipated and forecasted development projects. The state requires that jurisdictions demonstrate that there is land zoned that is suitable to support income levels of all types for all residents. The full text of the Program HE1 is included in the staff report on pages one and two. The housing needs rezone program was finalized in May 2024, when the board took actions to certify a programmatic environmental impact report and to rezone 15 properties, which included two properties that are owned by the county in the Sunset Area Plan, and 13 properties throughout unincorporated Placer County. These sites were rezoned to a new zone district, which is called RM30, combining DC, which means Residential Multifamily 30, combining Design Corridor. This new zone district establishes a minimum residential density of 20 dwelling units per acre and a maximum residential density of 30 units per acre. Public meetings, including workshops, town halls, MAC meetings, and
Okay, I'm gonna reconvene the meeting. Welcome back, everyone. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider amendments to the Placer County Housing Element 2021 through 2029. The Board of Supervisors is the final decision body for this item today. The Planning Commission will be making recommendations on this item to the Board of Supervisors. The staff presentation will be provided by Callie Kettenger Cecil, supervising planner. Hey, Callie.
Before we get to staff's presentation, I did just wanna address one thing, because it came up in comments, and I feel like it's something that's worth talking about before the item starts. I think the commission may have seen it, but there were a couple of comments that came in that raised concerns about potential conflicts of interest, specifically conflicts of interest with Mr. Puhuli. The comments raised concerns about the activities of his spouse, who is employed at D.R. Horton, which is a home builder company, and also holds an uncompensated volunteer position with the North State Building Industry Association as an executive committee member. I wanted to state that our office looked into the issue of conflict of interest and believed there is no conflict of interest that prevents Mr. Puhuli from participating in this item, the housing element item, or that would warrant continuance to this item. In specific, neither D.R. Horton or the Building Industry Association is an applicant in this proceeding. They're not named parties in the housing element, and no decision by the Planning Commission or Board on this item would result in any change in Mr. Puhuli's spouse's compensation, nor would it significantly alter either organization's revenues or expenses. In addition, I haven't have not identified that either organization has a real party ownership interest in any of the properties identified in the housing element, including the Hope Way project in Penrin that's proposed on a site identified in the housing element. I also want to mention that this is something that our office, the Community Development Resource Agency, and Mr. Puhuli have been monitoring since the start of his employment, and it's something that we will continue to evaluate if and when projects come forward in the future. I don't know if the commission has any questions on that topic, but did wanna make that statement before we start with staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Go ahead, Callie.
Hello, Commissioners and Chair Dahlgren. My name is Callie Kettenger Cecil, supervising planner with the Planning Services Division. Today, I am before you to present an amendment to the housing element. The housing element is part of the general plan and is an analysis of housing needs for the eight-year housing cycle. This cycle began in 2021 and ends in 2029. The housing element considers community context and outreach, legal requirements and general plan consistency, housing stock, demographics, and needs, constraints to housing resources, an inventory of existing housing resources, as well as goals, policies, and programs to implement the housing element. The current housing element was adopted and certified by the Board of Supervisors in May 2021. Included with the housing element was Program HE1, Rezone to Meet the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. The Regional Housing Needs Allocation is abbreviated to RHNA, commonly referred to as RENA, and I will refer to that standard as a RENA throughout my presentation. Program HE1 was designed to address a shortfall of 1,107 lower-income units, and through the Rezone Program that I will be discussing in just a moment, that shortfall was adjusted to 1,219 lower-income units as a result of changes that had to occurred to anticipated and forecasted development projects. The state requires that jurisdictions demonstrate that there is land zoned that is suitable to support income levels of all types for all residents. The full text of the Program HE1 is included in the staff report on pages one and two. The Housing Needs Rezone Program was finalized in May 2024, when the Board took actions to certify a programmatic environmental impact report and to rezone 15 properties, which included two properties that are owned by the county in the Sunsi area plan, and 15, or, I'm sorry, and 13 properties throughout unincorporated Placer County. These sites were rezoned to a new zone district, which is called RM30, combining DC, which means residential multifamily 30, combining design corridor. This new zone district establishes a minimum residential density of 20 dwelling units per acre and a maximum residential density of 30 units per acre. Public meetings, including workshops, town halls, MAC meetings, and hearings before the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors were held for the program. Draft amendments were prepared and submitted to HCD, and the first submittal occurred in March 2024, a second submittal in June 2024, and a third submittal in December 2024. The December submittal was available for public review for a seven-day public review period, which opened on December 7th and closed on December 14th. Following the public review period, the amendment was submitted to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for a 60-day review period. The HCD review began on December 24th and ended on February 20th with issuance of a letter to the county. This letter, in addition to letters following review of the previous amendment's submittals, are included in the staff report packet as attachments B, C, and D. The February review letter states that the county continues to comply with state housing law and that the December draft amendment addressed HCD findings from previous reviews. The amendment was prepared in order to implement Program HE1, Rezone to Meet the RENA, and outlines how the county will address the shortfall of lower-income units. This includes an adjustment to the residential land inventory, new implementation programs, minor grammatical corrections, revisions to an existing housing element program, a new Appendix F, which includes a site-specific analysis of the rezoned sites, information on non-vacant sites, descriptions of environmental constraints, information on infrastructure availability and capacity, and a fair housing analysis. Appendix F also includes detailed discussions of public comments raised and responses to these comments. The housing element outlines policies and programs that are intended to guide decision-makers in ensuring that the county is meeting the goals and policies of the housing element. The adopted housing element included 49 implementation programs. The amendment proposes to revise an existing program and add six new programs, and I do want to note that this slide does say seven programs. There are seven programs total that we are discussing with the amendment, but I'd like to clarify, one of those was an existing program that was within the adopted housing element. So I'd like to go through these new programs, as well as the existing program. Program HE9, this was included, as I noted, in the original housing element. This program discussed sewer improvements, and this program has been expanded in order to describe an existing reimbursement program that is available for public sewer improvements. Programs HE-50 and Programs HE55 are new programs. HE50 is titled Non-Vacant Sites and is intended to establish an outreach and coordination program to connect developers and builders with owners of non-vacant sites. HE51 is titled Replacement Unit Program and addresses rezoned sites that have existing structures. HE52, Large Site Development, is specific to sites over 10 acres, which includes rezoned sites 0, 00, 26, and 34. This program discusses expedited and streamlined review permit processing for projects that come forward on these sites that are affordable. HE53, Fire Hazard Mitigation, includes strategies from the local hazard mitigation plan to support hazard-related displacement prevention for development on rezoned sites 11, 17, 18, 42, and 43. HE54, Transit Access, requires that the county confer with Placer County Transit to discuss barriers to transit service at rezoned sites and to consider increasing access to facilit- uh, sorry, to increase access on sites not currently served by a fixed route service. HE55 is county-owned sites and is intended to facilitate development on county-owned sites, including sites at Dollar Creek Crossing, Cincinnati Avenue, and here at the Placer County Government Center. Staff presented the amendment to the Board of Supervisors at its December 3, 2024, hearing. At that hearing, 17 public comments were received prior in writing, and 24 individuals provided comments in person. Some comments were in support of the program, stating that the county needs more affordable housing opportunities. The majority of comments expressed opposition to the amendment and the Rezone Program. These commenters reiterated concerns that were raised at previous hearings, and comments received, including concerns regarding loss of rural and agricultural communities, high-density residential development, and consistency or inconsistency with existing neighborhoods and communities, the perception of the RENA obligation being inflated or too high, a perception that the county and HCD is unresponsive to public concerns, that the equivalency allowances in the county's affordable housing ordinance enables projects to proceed without constructing affordable units, concerns about specific aspects of potential future projects, and that Program HE52 is too vague and unclear about permit streamlining and expedited permit procedures. Following public comment, the Board directed staff to amend Program HE52 to clarify that the, to clarify the program's applicability, and directed staff to submit the amendment to HCD before returning to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors for final consideration and adoption. The draft was posted for a seven-day public review period, and 49 public comments were received. The public comments and the draft amendment was submitted to HCD in December for the 60-day review period, and as mentioned earlier in this presentation, that review concluded on February 20th with issuance of a letter from HCD. That letter found that the amendment was in compliance with state law, and no revisions or additional information was requested. The steps for finalizing the amendment include today's hearing to provide a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to adopt the amended housing element, a hearing before the Board to consider adoption of the amendment, and if approved, the housing element amendment would then be submitted to HCD for final review and certification. Four comment letters were received prior to today's hearing. These letters expressed opposition to the program, and these letters have been provided to the Planning Commission, and two of the letters that were received prior to posting of the agenda were posted with the agenda online. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the following items to the Board of Supervisors. The first is to determine that the proposed actions are within the scope of analysis of the previously certified final environmental impact report for the Housing Needs Rezone Program, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. And secondly, to adopt a resolution amending the Placer County Housing Element 2021/2029 as shown in Attachment A and Exhibits 1 and 2 attached to the report, supported by the findings in the report. With that, I conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Callie. Commissioners, any commissioner have questions? Questions? No questions?
Thank you.
I'm gonna open it up now for public comment. We'll take public comment from folks in the room first, so please come up to the microphone and introduce yourselves, first and last name. And you have three minutes to speak.
It's a packed house, so three minutes really is gonna matter. My name is Brian Myers. I'm representing the Placer Citizens for Neighborhood Rights, a coalition of individuals and groups in the community that are working hard to protect our communities from the devastating impacts of the high-density proportions of the housing element. Mr. Cook's comments about the conflict of interest are a little bit like the fox guarding the hen house. We believe there should be outside eyes, not this little relationship that's going on within the county. We're asking you to postpone this item until the investigation into the conflicts of interest that we've alleged are fully investigated and resolved. We feel the entire process of the housing element is now highly suspect. You simply cannot have a wife working for the Building Industry Association, either as a volunteer. She still has command authority. She was the director of the BIA, North State's BIA. You simply cannot have a person in her position hiring a lobbyist to lobby her own husband, and that's what's happened here. Her husband, the planning director, his superiors, we don't have access to any financial implications, and I hope that they're not stupid enough to have financial implications here. But we also don't know what information might have been transpired between this triangle of people. How is it that the building industry gets everything they want in Placer County, and they do? At the very least, there is a clear appearance of impropriety and violation of Placer County Code Section, Placer County Code of Ethics, Section 2.82. At worst, there may be a complete conflict of interest in violation of Government Code Section 87103 and California Code of Regulation, Section 18730 Subsection 9, which might make all the recommendations and actions taken on the housing element as null and void. We've often wondered why builders seem to get virtually everything they want in Placer County. Why have they not been held to the 10% affordable housing requirements? According to the Governor's Accountability Report Card, Placer County has built 12,315 housing units since 2019. What's the RENA shortfall? 1,219 units, almost exactly the 10% that they've overlooked in affordable housing. The current RENA numbers are eye-opening, with zero, zero very-low-income housing units being built, 118 low-income, 201 moderate, and 2,000 above-moderate income units being built. Why has affordable housing been ignored and almost exclusively done by ADUs in gated communities? Why is planning now trying to make up the shortfall with major high-density projects in rural areas like Penrin, where none of the required services, jobs, commercial restaurants, or public transportation exist? Why has this happened? Because builders are getting everything they want out of planning. Is it in part because of the improper influences being had between the Building Industry Association and Placer Planning? Even members of the Board of Supervisors have publicly commented about how flawed the RENA process was. Developers took out options, speculating on large parcels where high-density units would never be built under normal circumstances, like Hope Way, because they knew that planning would assist them in getting approval for these high-density developments. Again, the influences of the BIA on planning? I can give you many more examples of the flaws. One more paragraph, if I might, please.
No, I'm sorry. Thank you. Your time is up. Everybody only has three minutes. I appreciate it. We got your letter. We have your letter. Thank you for your time.
I would ask you to abstain or vote no on this at this point.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you. Hello.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Short, North State Building Industry Association. Our position on this remains unchanged. This is not our ideal housing element either, but this is by far the best way possible to, for the county to meet the demands imposed on it by the state of California, the best way for the county to be able to maintain its local control over land use decisions while allowing the building industry to continue to build communities that are well-planned and include a mixture of all housing types, single-family, multifamily, and certainly affordable housing. We would encourage you to adopt the staff recommendation and recommend that the Board of Supervisors accept this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
My name is David Unruh. I am the current president of the Placer Buddhist Church, which is directly adjacent to the Hope Way apartment proposal. We have been in Penrin for over 120 years, and in that specific location for over 60 years. A few weeks ago, I spoke to the Board of Supervisors. I was concerned about the emergency vehicle right-of-way across our property, which was being proposed without our permission. I'm thankful that this easement has been withdrawn. However, the emergency vehicle issue has not gone away. This project absolutely must have emergency vehicle access, separate from the current two totally inadequate entrance and exits, both of which use Hope Way as the only access source. This is, this is simply unacceptable. I remind you that this project calls for 463 parking spaces. Can you imagine 463 vehicles all leaving at 7:00 a.m.? Or 463 vehicles returning at 6:00 p.m.? What about the on-off ramps in both directions of I-80? Have you seen eastbound 80 at Horseshoe Bar at 5:00 p.m.? In the recent wildfire disasters in Maui and in Pacific Palisades, the roads were overwhelmed with people frantically trying to flee the flames. In Lahaina, people drove to the beach and literally dove into the ocean. Palisades Drive is a wide, divided, four-lane road with sidewalks, dedicated turn lanes, and signal lights. It was dangerously inadequate, and people simply abandoned their cars. The fire department was forced to bulldoze the cars out of the way. You are probably aware that Hope Way Lutheran Church has a daycare center. Current enrollment is around 90 children. That means every morning, there are 180 arrivals and departures on Hope Way. In the evening, another 180 arrivals and departures. That's 360 total arrivals and departures every single day. All of this without a single car from the Hope Way Apartments. I would like to invite all of you to our town hall meeting a week from tomorrow on April 3rd at 6:30 p.m. It is going to be packed with a lot of residents from Penrin and Loomis. You might want to hear what these voters have to say. Hope Way is a tragedy waiting to happen. I urge you not to approve this project.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Please come on up to the lectern and state your name for the record.
Hello. My name is Carol Kawamoto, and I'm a fourth-generation member of the Placer Buddhist Church, born and raised in Loomis, and current chair of our 58th Annual Fall Food Bazaar. My parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents on both sides of my family, as is the case with many of our Japanese-American member families residing in Placer County, were struggling farmers who helped build and finance our current temple and devoted most of their lives and significant resources to assuring it thrived. Our church was founded 122 years ago in Placer County and has been, in its current Penrin location, adjacent to the proposed Hope Way Apartments since 1962, more than 60 years. Several weeks ago, after looking through many pages of reports regarding the Rezone Project and Housing Element, I emailed supervising planner Callie Kettenger Cecil to ask why the county seemed to be advocating for for-profit developer USA properties to build this high-density, high-rise apartment project that seems so out of place and wrong for the location and in complete conflict with published principles of urban planning. It proposes to exclusively cluster income-challenged residents in a 12-high-rise apartments in numbers that would overwhelm the local social and physical infrastructure. Using the occupational occupancy numbers provided to me by USA Properties, the one development alone could add up to 1,344 residents, more than doubling the current population of Penrin. From our farming backgrounds, our congregation has a feel for acreage, and at its maximum tenancy, the project could have 118 persons per acre residing at the Hope Way Apartments. This seems nonsensical to me. While Callie replied with an explanation of how the applicant in county proceeded to review and process project plans, I'm now wondering, based on what's just been stated regarding potential conflicts of interest, if there isn't more to it? To plop this towering, high-density project on rural land between two churches, us and Hope Lutheran Church, as a means to offset 2,400 market-rate houses built elsewhere in the county, seems wholly unfair and discriminatory. Because I strongly feel that the proposed project and setting are not compatible, I intended to ask this commission to please downscale the Hope Way Apartments to a project more suitable for the setting, or to place the high-rise development project on another more suitable site. But in light of current testimony, I'm now asking that you table any further actions regarding affordable housing, and specifically the Hope Way Apartments, until the conflict of interest issue is appropriately investigated and resolved. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Come on up.
Donna Delnu from Penrin. Penrin resident for 24 years, heavily invested in protecting our tiny town of 871. Many of us, many of us are here today for the same thing, a continuance until allegations of conflict of interest are investigated of Mr. Puhuli and Mrs., named Bonnie Chu, that we just discovered on social media. The main issue with Mr. Puhuli's solution to produce affordable shortfall is that dropping three-to-five-story buildings at random locations is not planning. It creates more problems than it solves. The county has caused these problems. We are not responsible for the shortfall. We all want affordable housing, but the county wants to do this in our communities and shouldn't have to pay the price for their fiasco that burdens us forever. Before you make any decisions today, I'd like answers to three questions. One, if development is to be held accountable for their 10% affordable obligation, then why is a long-term policy necessary? Is the plan to continue to use rural communities to be dumping grounds for housing that they don't want to build? How is RM30 not a spot rezoned? The City of Lincoln, number three. The City of Lincoln lawyers are suing the gathering in. One of the causes of the action is that 105-unit rehab facility is 105 people, is too large for a small city of 55,000. Penrin is 871, and the incoming proposal, it could propose 1,300 tenants in a single project. How can this be? It's a travesty and found nowhere in America, nowhere. Please continue the item and work with HCD. Please continue the item and work with HCD on a real solution that will produce affordable housing in an equitable fashion rather than submitting projects which are too large and burden us forever. A commercial real estate agent in Penrin did calculations for us that we should have no more than 59 units. So a project with 59 units with mixed-use commercial like a bagel shop, EV charging station, coffee shop, something on the Penrin Parkway would be perfect and follow the 1994 community plan that would have zero controversy. The incoming proposal is beautiful, but it's in the wrong location. And then, again, I brought photos that this was not just a rumor that Chris is married to Bonnie, but if they're all out going to parties and having installations and all this kind of stuff, it's not right. It just can't be right that we can have a decision-maker that's so connected to the BIA. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Donna. Anybody else in the room would like to speak? Seeing none?
I think I was.
And those two, else. We will now go to online comments, if there are any.
All right. Caller with the name T, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hello. My name's Travis, and I've lived in Penrin for 41 years. I've listened to all your meetings, and it seems to me that sometimes you members of the board don't understand what is being presented to you no more than I do. I just, and now I've just heard there's some kind of conflict of interest that just is just getting pushed aside without any even looking into this thing. I'm confused from my end. The only thing I really would question of the board is to try to take a hard look into the future before you vote. What will happen to the community of Penrin if you move this along without making any kind of changes? And I, I think you might all want to attend this meeting I just heard that's going to happen at the Buddhist Church, because it sounds like they're going to talk about it in layman terms. And I think we all need to understand what is going to happen here before we vote on it and move this thing down. Look at the Sacramento, look at the other cities that have done this to themselves. And that's about all I have to say, and I really appreciate it if you decide to attend the meeting, and I'm sure you'll be more than welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Diane, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings again, Commissioners. This is Diane Louise Lussi from Crescent Valley Park Community Services District, 59 years in Placer County. So I've seen a lot. I want to commend and extend an acknowledgement and support for Donna Delno's comments and Brian Myers. And as somebody whom my son and I both, we work with trusts, are constructing trusts, foundations, nonprofits, LLCs, churches, I can think of many, many ways that if a private investigator dug in, could find how money gets laundered in scenarios such as what's being discussed. So for me, not too many winders are on, because I can see how these structures are built. And I've said this before a million times, this is, this is like, you get started with this, but it's 10 years down the line, and you've got the developer coming back because now they're bumping up against their 10% that they have to come up with for extreme low. And you guys amend the contracts. I've seen it, where you push it all the way out to the last phase. So you're never going to ever catch up at that rate. You have to start thinking outside the box and not listening to the state and try to get some pilot programs together instead of just innovating the communities. Elon Musk with Tesla is putting tiny homes together on county-owned land with a leaseback of $1 in Texas, so that there's no land acquisition, tiny homes. And then there's another outfit that's doing it with co-op. So they have a communal garden, kitchen, they take care of one another, and they can put skin in the game for leaseback and then purchase of their tiny home. And because they degrade if they're a modular one, that makes sense after seven to 10 years that they get replaced with a new one, and that person can take that away. You have to start thinking or getting on the internet globally and thinking globally and stop just doing the jackboot dance with the state. We're all being crushed. So with that, I yield and commend you all in the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
I see no others, Chair.
All right. Having no other public comment? No? Okay, I'm going to close public comment at this time. I'm going to bring it back to the commission for questions of staff. If any Commissioner has a question of staff at this time? Go ahead. Commissioner Beckler.
I think I know the answer, but I would just like clarification. For the HE 52 policy, the sites 0 and 00, are those the county-owned properties?
That's true. Those are the two Cincinnati Avenue properties.
The two Cincinnati Avenue, okay. And then, Callie and Chris, the on HE 52 for the streamlining, because I know that was a concern that was raised in prior conversations, in order to take advantage of those, the applicant would only have to meet the minimum qualifications for affordable housing, which currently, per county policy, is the 10%. Or they can use equivalency as an option. Is that correct?
We're double-checking. I think it's, I think it's actually 20% in order to take advantage, but we're checking on that number.
Thank you. And then, I know we've talked about this in other cases, that current in lieu fee for affordable housing is $2.59 per square foot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Those are all my questions. I'll have some comments later.
Any other questions for staff? For Cowan? All right. I'm going to bring it back to deliberations. First, I wanted to make a comment that I read the letter that came in with the accusations and opinions with zero facts. There were no facts. It was just impugning someone's character, someone's profession. Donna, we're done with public comment. Donna, we're done with public comment. It was obviously a last-ditch effort to stop the approval of the housing element by throwing a bomb in the process. It really doesn't have anything to do with Director Puhuli. I'm appalled that you did this, and I think you should be ashamed of yourselves. That's my own comment. The planning director is circ, public comment is closed. Okay, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to call this meeting and recess, and everybody will leave, and you'll waste everyone's time. So dial it down. Thank you. The planning director does not have the authority or the power to make these decisions. He is, he is a person who works here, and he does not have that authority. So I'm just appalled. I just had to say that. Now, back to staff recommendations and the housing element. This is not about Hope Way right now. This is about the housing element. That's down the road. This is about the housing element and the approval of that. So with that, I would like to bring it back to the commission. If anybody would like to say anything about the presentation from Callie.
Chair Dahlgren, I just did want to clarify the question that Commissioner Beckler had asked. So HE 52, it does not note a percentage. It just says the county will give high priority processing to subdivision maps that include affordable housing units. So that would apply if a project were proposing 10% for the requirements of county code or 20%.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions for staff?
Okay, yeah, I guess, I'm looking at the project list, and I see.
Get closer to the mic.
Oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the one that complains about people that don't speak in the microphone and I don't. Okay. So I see the project list that we have Hope Way listed. So what is the status of that right now?
The status of the Hope Way Apartments project is it is undergoing a conformity review, and we are reviewing the submittals, and we have prepared a webpage that provides information on the project. And we are anticipating to go before the planning commission sometime this summer, and we don't have a date set quite yet, but we are targeting sometime this summer.
Okay, and that process will involve a public input section, right?
Yes. Any development of the rezoned parcels for affordable housing would require a design review and a subsequent conformity review.
Okay. And so basically, what we're looking at here is not specific to Hope Way. It's specific to the whole housing element that's required by the state of California. And so basically, I guess what I'm hearing is the residents will have a chance to comment specifically on Hope Way in the future, but today is not the day to do that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I have just a few comments. So I think the, I think a lot of work has gone into this. The thing that I appreciate that came out of this is the agreement to do the NEXA study on the affordable housing fees. It's direly needed, as have many people have pointed out. A couple things that I'm going to share, which will probably sort of show my leaning overall. I absolutely am an advocate for affordable housing. It's always preferable if you can do infill housing in areas that are established, because I think that's what creates some of the angst with people in the community. What's really hard for me about the housing element, I think there's many really great things about it, and it's super complicated. And as I learn more about the state mandates, there are certain restrictions that you have and have to abide by because there are, you know, real implications. And those, to me, are real, not necessarily threats. At the same time, though, what's, what's always been difficult for me is that moving forward with significant policies like that, that change the community fabric, at the same time and parallel, projects continue to come forward that are reviewed, evaluated, and typically approved that use equivalency clauses, they use ADUs, don't bill 10%, and it just continues to perpetuate the problem over and over. So what's hard for me about the housing element as it is today isn't necessarily the details or the history. I don't think anyone likes the process that we had to go through. It was very complicated and challenging. It's that more action isn't taken by the Board of Supervisors to stop the madness of the not actually accommodating affordable housing and doing it right. I was really hoping through this entire process that things like HE 52, which allows, you know, large lot parcels, that at least more stringent affordable housing requirements would have been put in there. Because basically, what's going to happen in, in the case of Granite Bay, which is the area I live in, one of the sites there, it, you know, if an applicant decides to do a project that's market rate and then does an equivalency clause and allows ADUs, that's hundreds of units of affordable housing that then have to get displaced and find another home in the county. And so the can is going to continue to get kicked down the road. And in that particular case, the applicant made it very clear that that's what they were going to do. So it's not speculation, it's that there was an actual letter that stated that. So that's why I have just, I'm, I'm struggling to grapple with the conflict of, I think tons of good work is, went into this, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that. It's just the conflict of the county board not taking more action with a sense of urgency to stop the bleeding and actually put policy into place with a sense of urgency. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beckler. I'm going to make a couple of comments, because I know Council Cook likes to know why we're voting a particular way. I, too, echo some of the same concerns that Commissioner Beckler has. I struggled with the methodology of how the original 76 sites were chosen. I've struggled with that from the very beginning. And I struggle with our affordable housing ordinance, I think it's 1650, that allows developers to do the equivalency, and where it's gotten us in this position that we're in today. And so while I do find so many things of value in the housing element itself, and I am very, very fearful of the builder's remedy, especially after attending the conference that the planning commissioners went to in Sonoma a couple weeks ago, about how many cities are now under builder's remedy and how the projects get to be built however they want, in any way they want, in any size they want, the developers have carte blanche. So that is a threat we are up against, and it's real, and I am concerned about that. But I have struggled with the exact same issues on taking this as a package. My comments. Any other commissioners? All right. Who wants to make a motion?
I would make a motion, but I doubt there's support for it, so I don't know what the leaning of the other commissioners is at this point.
Rich, do you want to make a motion?
Are we going to do one and two separately, or?
Sure, separately.
So they would each be separate, and both of these are recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. And if you'd like, I can read them into the record.
Yes, please.
Well, I'd make the motion. Well.
Well, let him read it in the record, then you make the motion.
For the first item, it is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that the proposed actions are within the scope of analysis of the previously certified final environmental impact report for the Housing Needs Rezone Program, supported by the findings in the staff report.
Can I make a motion?
Can I get a second? First and second, can I get a roll call, please?
Johnson?
Yes.
Alves?
Yes.
Beckler?
No.
Runtine?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Abstain.
The second one is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt a resolution amending the Placer County Housing Element 2021 to 2029, as shown in Attachment A and Exhibits 1 and 2 attached to the staff report, supported by the findings in the staff report.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
First and second, roll call vote.
Johnson?
Yes.
Alves?
Yes.
Beckler?
No.
Runtine?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Dahlgren?
Abstain.
All right. That's it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks. Good morning.[1713.61]